Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 21st, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. Public participation will be offered in person and by webinar. You can join the webinar by going to the MBD water.org website and pulling up the agenda for tonight's meeting. It has a web link there that you can click on, or you can call 646-876-9923 and enter the webinar ID 851-437-99630. As a courtesy, Meramec TV is recording the meeting and will be posted on their website at a later date. So we'll call the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. And we'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation and God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we do have some members participating. Role call. We'll start with John. Can you let us know if you're available, where you're calling in from?
I am calling in from my home at 25 Windsor Drive.
Thank you. We have Ken Ayers, Wolf Von Schoen, and myself, Don Preventure, all present here at the MBD office, as well as Superintendent Ron Minor, Business Manager Jill Lavoy, and Michelle Holton, the Finance Resource. What is your title? I'm sorry. Human resource. All right, and we'll start with Michelle. So the first thing on the agenda is Analysis of Revenue and Expenditures Report.
So being through May, we are 91.67% through the year. Our revenues are coming in overall at 90.2%. The water sales, as we've noted throughout the year, those are all off budget, but our meter charges, hydrant, sprinkler charges, and entrance fees are all doing well and have helped to offset there. We're still monitoring how things are changing with all the rules related to the pandemic changing. We are still seeing actual numbers coming off from the three-year averages that we've been looking at. So we're just keeping an eye on it. As things change, we're just adjusting the COVID adjustment that we're doing for the unbilled revenues. So standing where we currently are, we'll definitely be making our revenue budget. We already have billed almost $180,000 in June, and then we'll have the unbilled for the three following, the operations from the three following months at the end of June. So does anyone have any questions on any particular revenue line items? We have seen backflow come back second half of the year. So that should be on track going forward. And that's account 40412. But as we said before, we had the first half of the year where we didn't do the testing. Those were lost revenues. Any other particular revenue line items that you have questions on?
I get like fly outs to come out here. No, go ahead.
And as far as expenses for the year, our total is $3.24 million, and our overall net ordinary income is coming in at $471,000 versus last year, we were at almost $610,000. But even with us being in that position, with our revenues, as I said, will definitely be coming in above budget. And just estimating for how we're going to come in as far as budgeted expenses, we're definitely going to be under budget there. So we will be seeing a surplus against budget for this year. We have a few items that we have touched on before. The propane account, 60400. We're a bit off in our estimates for budget there, but we have adjusted accordingly for the FY '21-'22 budget. Chemicals account, 60600. We're currently above budget by almost $9,000, but we do anticipate there's going to be another $20,000 or so. So those numbers for the coming budget starting July 1st were also looked at to adjust those accordingly. Because we will have a couple of additional orders coming in before the end of the year. And then account 819-502, our legal fees or PFAS. There we are over budget by almost $12,000 and also had adjusted for that in the coming budget accordingly. So as I said, overall, we're going to be coming in for the revenues above that budget, and our expenses will be below. And we anticipate having a good surplus for this year, which will allow us to do some replenishing of the capital reserves that we've drawn on this year, as well as in our unrestricted fund balance in line with where we want to see that. So does anyone have any particular expense line items that they have questions on?
I actually do have a question. You brought up something that just triggered a thought. So the legal expenses, right?
Yes.
The invoices are public record, right? The invoices are public record, right? So there would be no concern to share these in the board approval package?
Have to react to what the subject was?
It does.
Because we went through this with audit. Because audit was asking for them, and if they were going to look at them, they would have to react. Because it's legal.
I almost would.
I think we can confirm with current counsel as far as the format that they're using, which may be different than prior billings from other firms. So I don't know if I can agree with Mary.
I guess I would just like to maybe get a little bit more clarity. You know, which meeting costs us how much money? And which idea costs much about how much money, right? So in the board package doesn't really, or maybe I'm missing it, but I'm not sure if it really spells it out, right? The AP approval budget, oh, package.
The approval packet, we actually do send the backup to the board for all legal invoices, along with all project invoices and others upon request. But we usually are.
Well, upon request, right, but in this name.
But including legal and projects. You should be receiving those. Because I always note, I kind of tag the vendors, and at the bottom I just wrote VOC backup.
Okay, I need to look at that.
Okay, I will verify to be sure that those are being properly attached.
I'm saying I need to look at that, too. Because normally I look at that, you know, at the attachments and, you know, I do, because I look at the. I keep asking, what's the drive all for?
Legal projects and any credit accounts.
Okay, so.
We usually, those are all standards to be included.
Okay.
But I will verify for sure that there hasn't been any miscommunication there.
Just that's up to Jamie's got a really tight schedule, so we need to bounce him on and then come back.
When's his?
It's on 5:45. Let's see if we can make that work.
Come on at 5:45? Okay, all right. Michelle, I probably might have asked you this before, but service charge 40408, did that just get moved to a different line item? Because it's got zero for.
No, that would be if we haven't added any new mains this year.
Oh, we haven't?
That would be mainline addition.
All right, so.
That's just, we usually put something.
Okay.
Something there so that we can record any of the revenues that do come in.
Do we know when Old Blood Road is going to be connected? Is that going to be?
I don't.
Like, the new development, obviously.
It's been, I don't even know how far they are. I have to, I can find that out.
Okay, I have a few other questions.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this looks, the administrative sick payout, looks like we're already over budgeted. Some of that COVID-related, or is that?
The administrative sick payout happens once a year. So it's just one payout. So that's why it will be, it happens in December. So it's actually going to come in under budget because that's the final number. But it just shows it's actually paid out at 95%.
50108?
So that's at 90.4%. That was actually paid out in December, and it stood at that number. So at the end of the year, it will still stand there and be under budget.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think you mentioned all the other things, chemicals. I was just looking more at like last year's comparison, but that's not really accurate. I should be looking at the budget. So that's fine. I'm not, I don't have any other questions.
Well, that payout, is that one of those things that are maybe on the radar to be accrued? We can balance it out a little bit. We don't have that, you know, overswing effect of the timing?
We can, we are looking at how we're going to record budget in the coming years for FY '22 as far as spreading more things like that out. But we do actually, we do an annual year-end accrual for any vacation and sick that are outstanding to be paid out. But we could also, we could smooth that out.
So we don't reserve any, like, the planned PTO payout?
No, we do, we have.
We do.
Yep, we do a full, we only adjusted at year-end.
Okay.
But we do for both vacation and sick.
Okay, and we do that at the beginning of the fiscal year already? The projected, or the, you know, the contractually owed PTO?
Well, what we do is we do it at 6:30, and then it just, it updates for 6:30 and carries on the balance sheet until the end.
Right, but that's, that's only the untaken one from the last year. What about the one from the current year? Normally, that needs to be accrued, too, because it's a lot of.
We've just, we've been traditionally just doing the audit entries at year-end. But that's something if we were, we could either start doing, we've been looking at doing something either quarterly and always if we were to ever have to submit financials, if we were doing any funding or something like that, we'd pull in the full accruals to bring the books up.
And that's for the, for the current fiscal year owed as well, not only the backlog of untaken and unfortified PTO from the prior year?
It actually, it takes into account what is owed at 6:30.
Including for the current fiscal year, for the, until the end of the current fiscal year?
No, it's, we update it at the end of the year. So during the year, we aren't adjusting.
Right, but that's only, but what I'm saying is you have two PTO periods. You have the one of the prior year, right, of carried over PTO that's being owed from the last fiscal year, right? That really should have gotten paid and reserved in the last fiscal year and then carried forward. But then you also have an obligation, which is liability. It's money that we have to pay out of somewhat leased a company at the end of the year. That's money that we can't spend, right?
Yes, but we.
But that's not the untaken and carried over PTO. That's the current year's PTO.
Right, and we don't, we don't normally adjust that during the year. We haven't historically.
Okay.
But that's one of the items that, we're looking at doing that and also the accrued interest on all the loans.
Because that is a liability. If somebody, you know, is owed for some reason, a senior person that has maybe 30 years PTO, that's a chunk of money if somebody's making $80,000 a year.
Yes, and we have, and actually, and the reason we haven't been doing it is when we're looking at numbers in the reports that we have here, we're looking against budget only, and that's not a budgeted number.
Sure it is. It's in the, it's in the annual, it's in the salary.
We have.
Maybe something for budget meeting, but I don't want to stall the meeting, but. I mean, yeah, let's talk about it in a budget meeting, so.
All right, so we're moving on to the bank account summary, or that's just the stuff here, right?
We will have almost $180,000 coming from capital reserves. That will be issued by year-end. And we'll also, when we get those funds back, we'll do the reconciliation of the Wells 4 and 5 account because some of the monies that's going to come from capital reserve was originally paid out of the operating account before we had some funding. So we have to do a full reconciliation of what stands in there for audit and just for our reconciliation of the project. So we will be, we will be doing that. And there are some transfers that we had done for cash flow that'll also move back, but we keep a lot of those. Does anyone have any questions on any particular accounts or account balances?
Oh, good. All right. So treasurer's position?
Yes, I have provided a listing of the duties that just simply, the basic duties taken right off RSA for the treasurer. That was.
John, you might have that on your email, I think.
I can run down them. Basically, the treasurer's duties are to have custody of all funds, including managing our online access, to pay out the sums on the orders from the board, payrolls in the bi-weekly accounts payable, as well as some various miscellaneous items that are infrequent. All monies must be deposited in authorized bank per the treasurer RSA or in the public deposit pool. Fair and correct accounting of all sums received and paid need to be maintained, as well as a listing of any bonds and notes that are issued. Or we keep our long-term debt schedule. So there needs to be an accurate record-keeping and timely reconciliation done of all bank accounts. The annual treasurer's report is issued at year-end, and the book should always be available for the board or auditors upon request. And the treasurer will also invest any excess funds in according with our district investment policy. It must be ensured that all monies are fully collateralized for the RSA and all monies are deposited whenever the total is $1,500 or more. We have a remote scanner, so we do our daily, all our daily check deposits and the cash deposits we do once a week unless we hit the $1,500 mark. Historically, for quite some time, many of these duties have been delegated to MBD staff and/or done in collaboration, such as investment. When we're looking to do investments, myself and the treasurer will look at where things stand, look at what our options are, touch base and review with Ron and Joe as district management, and then make the proposals to the board. As I said, deposits, we currently scan and make the deposits per delegation to the bank. And also, the reconciliations are presently done internally and are reviewed by the treasurer. And we also have created a separate treasurer report for tracking just things in summary. Basically, starting balance, deposits, with just a few categories, less the AP payroll and any miscellaneous items, just to make sure that it's circling back to our, presently our QuickBooks records and reconciliations. And looking at what we were doing to inform with the appointment of the treasurer position, I spoke with some other communities, and I noted that both the town and also Goffstown, and there are a few others that I didn't speak with, but both of them shared information that they actually, since they had already delegated some of the duties and already were collaborating on many of the duties, the first two that I highlighted, someone having custody of the monies being the signer in managing the online access, as well as the responsibility to pay out the sums per your approved manifest to ensure that they're paid to the correct vendors for the correct amounts, as well as payroll and like. The two entities that I mentioned, Goffstown and Meramec, actually brought on these functions to an internal staff person that was already doing the other functions. So we were, been looking at this. I wanted to ask the board if you would consider, we currently have, Michelle Thompson is our administrative assistant, and she helps with both general administrative but also finance. She has a bachelor's in business administration, and she has been performing various functions and expressed interest in being able to take on the other functions in conjunction with the main role that she does here already. And in looking at it, I know that the, you know, the spirit is to ensure that the tasks are being done in a transparent way. We're maintaining our controls to secure the public funds and to pay them out per your authorizations. And I think by having the proper record-keeping set up, that we have a separate set of books that would be maintained, the manifests, as always, have been maintained internally as reference and backup to what's paid out. But really, we would just be adding on the signing responsibility and also the further responsibility of ensuring that the AP and payroll are paid out per your authorization. I wanted to know if we would consider allowing the appointment to be added on to her role. And in light of the fact that many of the duties are already delegated to or done in collaboration with staff, I think our stipend has been $2,500. I think bringing it down to $1,200 and $100 a month would be reasonable compensation for the additional responsibility that would be added to the position. So I just wanted to see if that was something the board is open to, has any questions or want any clarification?
So.
To consider that.
Can you, sorry, I kind of missed.
So are you saying to eliminate the treasurer, the treasurer role and to kind of break it into the roles that you guys are already doing now?
I would actually, I would propose that we have it all come under Michelle's duties. But that it always is, we would have it paid out as a stipend still. Added to her current role would sort of have a subset of treasurer duties and clearly specifically spelled out that she would, you know, be responsible for this, for reviewing the treasurer's report with you. Perhaps I know that it's required annually, but even quarterly, and of course, as it details out anytime that it's requested. But we go through an annual audit by an external firm. We've worked with Plazek and Sanderson, our auditors, before where we're small. Every once in a while, just run by them how we're proposing segregating our duties because it can be a challenge in a small office that you want to make sure you have the proper controls and checks and balances. So some of her duties would slightly change from her regular position just to ensure that her access is appropriate for her doing the treasurer duties. And I would actually like to run it by, there is an auditor, Scott Egan at Plazek and Sanderson, who is very well-versed in internal controls. He does a lot of engagements throughout the state. So I'd like to run it by him if we were to consider moving forward with this.
I got to be honest, I'm not in favor of that for many reasons, more than one reason. I think Michelle is awesome. I think she's doing a great job, and she would be probably very suitable for this role. But it starts with, and you just said a key thing, she needs appropriate access, right? An auditor or a treasurer may need access to data that substantiate, for example, payroll. That means we need to open up payroll information for her, for other employees. I think that's not appropriate, actually, in itself, as an example, for in her position to have access to that information of the pay scale of other employees. I think that's a bad idea. And the other reason, and really.
But we're actually public, so our.
Yeah, but there's still some details, you know, when we look at the offices and we look at the payroll for, as a budget line item, but we don't look into individual paychecks for individuals. And be it as it may, you know, I mean, you can read a lot into that data not knowing all the details, just looking at it, right? So, and just to do that within employees, it's different for you or Ron, right, as supervisors and directors? But for an employee out of, and I appreciate the leadership role she has right in front of our customers, but personally, I feel she doesn't have a management role, right, a leadership role in the company. And as such, I'm not sure if I would agree with that. But that's not even the main reason. For me, the treasurer position is a sore thorn in your side, right? That's the idea of the, it's an auditor. It's this balance of power in an organization. It looks over everybody's activities and shoulders and makes sure that nothing, you know, nefarious is going on. And while I don't want to, you know, insinuate that this is happening at all, but.
It's an objective thing that we have to have, I mean.
And I've said before, I've said.
We go back and forth, making sure we have.
I've said before that I'm not a fan of the Warren article in the first place, right? I would have actually not voted for it. Actually, in fact, I think I wasn't here when it was voted on by the board to be recommended or not. But I always felt that the treasurer should not be appointed. It should be elected. Be it as it may that we didn't have a candidate, but we also didn't beat the drum to get one, right? Because we were kind of waiting for that article to pass or not to pass. But I always think a treasurer is somebody that stands outside of the organization and looks from the outside in, just like an auditor does, right? And appointing a person inside of the organization to be a treasurer is defeating the purpose of having one in the first place. That's just my personal opinion. And, you know, again, no vote of lack of confidence in Michelle. I think she would be awesome doing this. It's just defeating the purpose of having a treasurer in the first place for somebody to do that on the inside.
And I just, and I totally appreciate, you know, your concerns and your view of it. But I know that in any organization that I've worked with, we've always had to put proper controls in over who has access to the funds. And it would be, it would be staff. It's clearly defined, and it can be, you know, it should be checked. It should have deliverables such as the treasurer's report and the reconciliations that are going to prove out that they are properly performing their duties. So that was, that was just my thinking that, as I said, we were already doing various things that were delegated, doing things in collaboration for many years. And I just felt like if we ensure that, as I said, we'd have to look at every function she does and decide, does that maybe have to move to someone else so that she properly can fulfill the treasurer's duties?
I think, I just, I'm sorry. Well, I'm kind of, Wolf, I think Wolf is trying to basically say to protect the integrity of a process.
Right.
And I agree with that, you know. I just, it's just sad that we don't really have somebody in the outside community that really wants to jump in and do that. And I think any kind of changes to that, I'll say, it would almost like we would have to put it to the voters, too. Do you want to eliminate the treasurer and have it exhort? I think that, you know, we need to protect the integrity. It just, you know, that's the dot to i's, cross to t's, but.
If you're just, okay, just to add that on quick and then I'm done, you know, we came from an elected official that's looking from the outside in. And then we said we're going to appoint it, which is already a little bit of a, you know, change in say for the voter, right? Say, right? So the voter already has less say, and now we're saying it's going to be an employee, right? For me, that's really three steps or two steps, whatever you want to say. It's two steps to reduce the control that the voter has, right? Now, the voter didn't take advantage of that, right? Because nobody said, I'm not going to do that. Because nobody said, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to act as the treasurer. I'm going to run for that office. But it doesn't change the fact that we're, we're changing the narrative of that position, right? And, and you know, the source of power, if you want to call it that, right? We're taking that away from the voter first, first by saying we're going to appoint him. And granted, the voter said, we're okay if you appoint it, if MBD appoints that, the voter is okay with that. So I need to be okay with it. But now to say, we're going to do it as part of this organization, that's just really yet another step in, in, in that process. And you said it right, the integrity for me is, is not there anymore at that point.
Okay. I just, I wanted to bring out there, I'm still, you know, in, in speaking with some of the other municipalities, you know, they said they, they made sure they kept the duties as sort of an add-on to the position. It would still be responsible to the board to prove out that the duties are being done appropriately and with appropriate controls in place. And I just wanted to have a discussion to see if we were open to that before we really focused on moving forward with gathering candidates for the elected, the appointed position.
Yeah. So with that being said, if when we advertise for a treasurer, does the board want to interview? Set up times, if we get candidates, we can set up some times and.
Why don't we table this for the minute now and, because Jamie's going to be here and gone. And this is dragging into his time. So Jamie, if you're ready to go, we'll, we'll entertain you at the moment. I know you're on a short time constraint, correct?
Yep. Well, I'm, I'm on vacation, so. I, yes and no. I mean, I've, it's been a struggle a little bit. But here, I felt it was really important to get on this call tonight to kind of give you an update on two things. First and foremost, maybe we'll talk about the Wilson, because that was the, that was the discussion request. I'm going to share my screen, I think for the moment. But let me see if I can do that. You've disabled me, so sorry. Are you able to, Jill, are you able to let me share my screen?
Right on that now.
Okay. All right. While they're doing that, just let me know when I'm ready, when you're ready.
You're all set, Jamie.
Okay. Okay. And let's just bring this up. Let me if you can see that. Can you see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jamie, they actually have your report in their board packet on this.
Okay. So we looked at both properties that you see, the north and the south on this particular site. And they, we looked at both, just kind of on a preliminary basis, the opportunity to drill a bedrock well and an opportunity to drill an unconsolidated well. And the results were not favorable for bedrock. We did not find that the rock units were favorable. The fracture fabric was not favorable. There weren't sufficient indicators that would suggest that there would be some discontinuity in the rock below that we could pursue. So we recommended against that. We do believe that there's an opportunity to do some test well drilling to the south in, near the floodplain. It's a steep ascent down into the area. But we believe that there's an opportunity for a couple of test wells to be drilled. And so our recommendations would be essentially to drill a couple of test borings down in that area to see if we can indeed find additional more permeable and transmissive deposits. Now, if you recall, the reason why we're actually interested in this area is because the board has expressed interest in non-PFAST related groundwater sources like the Mitchell Woods. And this would be a site that would be considered non, you know, that we would not be concerned about PFAS contamination. So that's essentially it. I think the only thing that I'm looking for the board is to ask you if you would like me to proceed with providing a proposal that could be, that could be discussed at the next meeting to do some test borings down there. Now, I don't know, Ron, if the homeowner is able to continue to allow us to consider that or not. But, but that would be our recommendation.
Here. You're talking 70, 70 Wilson Hill, correct?
Correct. Correct.
I haven't spoken to the homeowner lately, but the last I talked, that wasn't, they were, they were more interested in 69 Wilson Hill, not the 70 parcel, but I can certainly check with them on that.
I think that would be wise. You can, I mean, we're not interested as hydrogeologists in the, on the property to the north. We've excluded that from further invest, you know, further consideration. And that she'll be hap, I mean, I think she wants an answer one way or the other. So she'll be happy to have some direction on that, I believe.
Jamie, you, in the letter says that you're talking about further exploration, exploration of geophysical surveys, electrical resistivity. Would you be doing that in conjunction with the test drilling? Because you just mentioned doing a couple of test wells. So what?
Yeah.
Work together?
Yeah, we would run one survey line down there before we do the drilling, but, but essentially to kind of pinpoint where the drilling would go. But we would do it all as one, you know, a subtask. There would be two, there'd be an exploration, but it'd be a subtask, geophysics and then test well drilling.
Right. What, um, what, what would you estimate that cost?
Yeah. So for the geophysics and the test boring, I mean, I think we'd probably be in the $20,000 range, 15 to 20,000.
And that includes the geophysical work too?
Yeah, because we're only going to be doing one, one line down there. So.
Yeah. I was wondering, I mean, have you assessed like the watershed? Are we talking about maybe indirect recharge from the river, the South Egan?
Indirect recharge from the river, correct.
Okay.
I mean, anything that would be drilled in those deposits would ultimately be, you know, filtered out through the deposit, the standard gravel. But we, we would want and desire the recharge from the river.
Jamie, I'm not clear right now. This is not the aquifer that runs along continent or anything. It's a separate one, right? Further, further.
Completely, completely separate, correct. Yeah.
So they're completely separate. So what about like the, the overall aquifer permitting, you know, process and, and the production volume for that aquifer? We don't currently have a well on that aquifer, do we?
Correct. We don't. So this would be something completely different and new. We don't have a, we don't have any wells in that area because it's never been discovered or had properties available.
Right.
River to, you know, to generate, to generate a favorable situation. But this is one that, you know, if we were fortunate enough to get a very coarse grain deposit that was laid down in that region, that it's going to be, nothing's simple anymore. It's going to be complicated. We'd have to demonstrate, we're not going to influence adversely the river flow. Wetlands, we can stay out, you know, that we're not impacting the wetlands. But I like the, the concept, you know, if we're able to do something there of doing something completely independent, everything else you have.
And this aquifer would not be connected to the one up at Wilson Hill, not Wilson, what I'm talking about.
Mitchell Woods.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. No.
They're not connected.
No.
Is the South Egan considered like a stressed river basin at all? Does DES have any?
Good question. Yes, it is. It's considered one that would be not stressed, but is under, you know, it has special rules that we would need to follow in terms of withdrawals. And that would all be part of the, which is doable. I mean, we have many rivers that we have to deal with in that regard. But it just adds a little bit of the complexity to the permitting. But it is all mute if we don't have a source. And I think this is a long, you know, this is the long view. This is something we're just kind of tapping and seeing and the next, if we do find something in the, in the test borings, then we would start getting a little bit more serious about how do we, you know, how do we get there? But I, I think it's doable, certainly doable. There's certainly an opportunity to get it there, but the deposits are the key. And, and we haven't, that's where we got to go.
I mean, without having that done, you can't tell if this is going to be any better or worse than Mitchell Hill, Mitchell Woods yield?
Well, I think it would, if we have transmissive deposits like we have with Mitchell Woods, we would have more of a consistent, you know, supply source. We have a more consistent recharge source.
Right.
So, you know, the reason why we're limited to the Mitchell Woods is because it's in a, in a little bit of a bathtub in that we have, we can peak, we can take water out during a peak demand period, but we, you know, it's just not sustainable 365.
Right.
Whereas this one would be more, you know, we'd be looking at it from a more sustainable basis, you know, so.
So you would want to, if we're in favor of proceeding with more, you'd come back to us with a proposal, I would imagine?
Yeah, yeah. I'd just bring a proposal.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know. I kind of would like to know if this has potential to be better than Mitchell Woods because Mitchell Woods has got, it's a small source and it's expensive to develop it because it's such a small source. You know, the cost per gallon per day is, is high. I'm curious what the source could be here. So I'm kind of intrigued to see if, does it make sense to move forward on that? I mean, obviously I feel kind of funny moving forward on this when we got Mitchell Woods and we haven't moved forward on developing Mitchell Woods. But again, if this has more source capacity than Mitchell Woods, then this might be more favorable to pursue instead of Mitchell Woods. Maybe that cost per gallon could go down.
Yeah, I think this is a business decision, not necessarily a hydrogeologic decision. You know, if, if the business decision is that it's a better choice than whether we've got another permitted opportunity or not, probably makes it less important. But, you know, land ownership is always the key, you know? Do you get open opportunities with land in areas that are favorable? And that doesn't come up. And that's why, you know, we pursue it in the first place.
Yeah.
So.
It's also good to know what options we don't have, right?
So. Couldn't say it more clearly. Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I was a little surprised about your statement, that you don't anticipate any, any PFAS contamination in that area over Mitchell Woods, which I believe we have seen some PFAS contamination, right?
No, no, PFAS is clean. It's clear.
Oh, yeah. I thought we said the other day we did.
It's detectable, but it's not over.
Right, right. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Which means it's there.
Yeah.
But we're talking about at extreme low levels. I mean, not, I mean, it, levels that are, are
Single.
In the order of potential measurement. And I think most of our samples came up with non-detect up there. We did, if you, I have to go back and look at it, but we did a long-term pumping on that, took the samples and we gave it a clean bill of health.
Interesting.
Would you include some preliminary PFAS samples on some of the water that you pumped out of the test wells?
We could. I hadn't gone to the point of doing any testing on the wells yet. I was just trying to see if we had anything to work with. But that could, I could add another step in that proposal that would say, okay, if we find something favorable, we'll do some preliminary testing and some water chemistry and so forth on that. I was just looking at, trying to get to the point of, do I have something to work with?
Yeah.
Think this test that he's talking about, see if we could get the flow rate out of that.
Yeah, I think, so you would, would you be able to estimate like what a potential yield would be in that well site?
Yeah, that's a good question. Yes. If we go to that level, we would go into, we'd put in a pump, we'll drill a three-inch test well, which changes the approach a little bit. So maybe instead of 20,000, we're at 25,000 because we've got to do three-inch testing. But in that case, we could do, put a small submersible pump, get some specific capacity measurements and, and give you an estimate of the, of the yield.
Now, what you thought, John? Any thought on this?
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be money well spent, to be honest with you. I wasn't convinced at first, but I think, you know, the fact that if it comes out poor, okay, it's 25 grand, that says Mitchell Woods might be a good idea.
That's what I'm thinking too.
Exactly. Right. Yeah.
And if it comes out really good, then great.
Right.
Yeah. And I would want, I'd want to do the pump test. I'd want, with the yield, I'd want to see the PFAS results. I don't know if there's any other major concerns, maybe arsenic or something like that. Those would be relative.
Yeah, we would test, we would, yeah, we would test arsenic as well, iron and manganese.
I was going to say, yeah, sodium chloride really too, not that that should be, should be an issue in the area.
Yeah, we would do all of those. But recognize that when we're talking about testing a three-inch well, it's a preliminary assessment.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, but that's what we do. I mean.
Got to start somewhere.
Yeah. Exactly. So, and right now, we're just talking about a proposal. So, you know, I would generate a proposal and bring it to your board. We can have that further discussed. But I'll add to your point, I'll add, I'll add a task to do some yield and quality testing.
Again, if you do the geophysics and it just doesn't show that you really have any thickness that's appreciable to proceed with, then.
Then we would stop.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I like that. If you want to do it in sequence like that, you know, put it, put all the tasks in one proposal.
I will.
And definitely, you know, we'd like to do some, some water chemistry and some drawdown tests, at least in one, maybe in the most favorable test well. And, you know, if that, if that shows data that's more promising, then maybe we'll, we'll, you know, go to the next level after that. And if not, then we know we've at least looked at what we need to look at.
Yep. And Don, what I'll do is put a, you know, in that proposal, I'll put a price for each task. So if we go through the geophysics and we don't like it, then you'll know what you're not spending for the next tasks.
Yeah, that's a good, yeah. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Is everybody in favor of that? What do you think, Ron?
So that's fine. It's just going to be a proposal right now.
Yeah.
And I'll have to talk to the homeowner and see if it's something that's favorable or not, but.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So maybe by the next meeting, if you want to just.
Well, maybe even further, maybe you want to talk to the homeowner first before he goes through the process of creating proposal? Because if the homeowner says, says no.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
He was, he's wasting time.
If they say no way, then you'll save me some time. Thanks.
Right.
So if I recall, they were also asking for a copy of this.
And that was my next question. Was it okay to release this?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why not to.
What?
Doesn't say anything.
It really doesn't.
The other too strongly, so.
Technically, they can ask for the copy of the packet, right?
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah. So I get, we can, I'm okay with letting go if you guys are to the landowner.
That sounds good.
All right. And then, so your next item was the well nine pump test?
Well, nine pummy test. Yeah. So one of the things I'm going to do is share my screen again, if I can. Just on, and hang on a second. Doing this off of solar power, you should be proud of me here.
Really?
I have no electricity in this. I'm in a little cottage on a little sand spit off the coast of Nantucket with no electricity and no running water. And so that'll give you the sense of how committed I am to you guys.
And you call that a vacation?
Yeah, well. We eat fish and clams, anything we can catch, that's about it. Because you can't get to the, you know, mainland except by boat. Mainland is an island, so you go, you go from a little island to a bigger island. And there's only three little cottages out here, so it's very, very remote. But I've been coming.
Sounds like fun, great.
I know. I've been coming here since I was three years old, so it's, um.
Wow.
We don't own it, but we know the family and we, you know, there's only special people that they allow because use kerosene lanterns. And, you know, it's, it's a crazy thing. So that's why my timing is important because I lose the sun and I do what I can do. So we have, everything is in order. We've laid the pipe. We've got the pump set in well number two. Ron has got his piping set. We've got the pump in the well number nine. And we are struggling with the fact that if you look at the water, if you look at the wetlands between where we've said proposed discharge location and MVD two essentially is all standing water. So if you remember last year, we had no standing water in this, in this wetland. And that was in our favor because then, you know, we had a historical event that said we were not going to adversely impair a wetland. Well, for whatever reason, even though we're in a semi drought, there is water, standing water throughout. Well, for whatever reason, even though we're in a semi drought, there is water, standing water throughout, and we've checked to see if there's barricades from beavers and down trees and so forth, and I, we cannot explain it. But we have had conversations with the state, in fact, we've had a most recent conversation this morning. And uh, they will add, if we do this pumping test while this has got a lot of water in it, uh, they're going to ask for a lot more information, we're going to have to put in additional um, monitoring stations and surface water stations and things of that sort. The recommendation I have right now is that we hold off until July seventh or July fourteenth. I've started establishing monitoring of the surface water, we have to see, unfortunately, it's been getting, there's been more surface water showing up in this wetland than less surface water. But as you can imagine, the, the analysis gets extremely complicated. If we start pumping these wells and the wetlands start drying, you know, going down, because uh, we know that the well, MVD two has been operating for forever, and that those wetlands are dry much of the year, and we, I went ahead last year, if you recall, I just made a bold decision to go out and take a lot of photography of the dried wetlands. But I know the state, Andrew Coffey, who's going to be reviewing this permit, has already told us that um, if there's, you know, if we can i- i- it's going to be a complicated mess if we start pumping when we've got so much water without going with additional um, monitoring, so this is a surprise to us, it's something that I didn't expect, nobody expected it. Um, I just, my recommendation right now, I know we had suggested that we would start next week. Um, my recommendation, and I think we can still make the timeline that we're talking about. Uh, I know that's critical, but I think we need to wait to at least July seventh to run this pumping test. And I also want the MVD two well to be operating, to see if indeed, uh, when it was off, if that had any influence on this wetland, because that's historical and I don't have to, you know, that's not something that's, that's already grandfathered in. But I would rather see that well operating and see if we get changed conditions, so when we put in MVD nine and we do the long-term pumping test, that we're not getting there's not, there's no unnecessary concerns about things that might occur as a result of that pumping, so my strong recommendation is that, uh, and I, I don't know if we have any other choice really, is that we, we wait till the July seventh or possibly the fourteenth and, and get everything established, assuming that it's not going to go down, so that we can address or at least attempt to address the concerns that are going to come forth when we start doing this pump test, because we can't do it again, the expense is too great, we've got to do it one.
So what, what's going to happen between now and July seventh or fourteenth, you're adding some additional monitoring points or?
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna add some monitoring points in the service water, we're also gonna hope for the best and see if we can get uh, that water level down. In terms of, maybe we have some dryer, you know, we have some dry weather, uh, my guys have gone and scoured that, Ron knows this, we've scoured that area to see if there's any blockage that is holding this up, um, but we haven't found anything um, yet, but we're going to continue to look. But my hope is that we get this water level down in the next three weeks.
Yeah.
Any construction work? Is there a word?
Is, Jamie, do you think there's any way we could run some, some additional lay flat hose out, maybe get it further out?
Uh, well, that's possible, because the lay flat hose is at its max capacity to get to that point. So, and getting it through that area is, is a challenge too. But that wasn't, the, you know, when I talked to Dan about that earlier today, he didn't feel that that was a really a, a possible option. Now, if we see this diminish a little bit more, you know, maybe we do a third lay flat, I don't know, but right now, with two lay flats going with it, that, if we're gonna pump a thousand or nine hundred gallons a minute, whatever we can pump out of this, you know, we're, we're getting close to max capacity out there, so just so for the board knows, we, we're using your pipeline uh, or the proposed pipeline from nine to two, and then we're like, putting out two parallel um, lines from two to the end. That will pick up that water, so.
But that downfall is still where the water is potted right now, right?
Yes.
So even if the water goes away, are we worried about just that water ponding up again?
No, uh, we're gonna go just beyond it, so that's, that's the plan, right, you know?
Jamie, I'm not sure if I fully understand, so what I'm hearing, and tell me if I'm hearing that right, is that your concern is that we have unexpected standing water, and if we start pumping that test well, that, you know, if coincidentally that standing water disappears, it could be seen as a negative impact on the wetlands, that's what I mean.
Correct, correct, one hundred percent.
Right, okay, so it's not a ma- which it may or may not be, right, it, it just, it might recede for other reasons that, that we don't currently understand, so so you want to pump when we don't have that standing water, so.
Right, because the limitation can be drawn. Correct, because the, the one thing that the state has told us is that their greatest concern here is the wetlands.
Right, so it's not a matter of us feeding the wetland or the, the standing water with the pumped test water, it's a matter of a coinc- coincidental receding of the standing water while we pump, that may be construed as being affected, being caused by us pumping brown water.
Yeah, and, and Wolf, to be one hundred, I think there's a, there's some concern too that we might back, you know, as Ron mentioned, we might backfill in, you know, if that's standing water, we might serve to keep that standing water stable by pumping more water, or we might end up overflowing the standing water and cause, you know, uh, more recharge than expected. It's complicated, and I thought we, you know, last year when I went out there and took all those pictures, when it was completely bone dry, I was um, happy because I felt like we just had a, you know, we could, we could make that argument. But if I get into a bad coincidental, you know, decline in the water level on the wetlands there during this pumping, then I've got a story that I can't, it's going to be incredibly complicated to tell. And, and what'll happen, and we may not be able to get out of this, and Don can probably appreciate this and others um, who are in this game a little bit, that the level of monitoring is going to be, see, is going to be a lot higher as a result of this pumping test, having these wetlands filled like they are, or having wet water in the wetlands, so at the, even at the end of the day, we're probably going to have some additional conditional criteria established as part of the permit. But I think it's worthy of just waiting till July seventh and fourteenth to try to make that determination, and then Peter Pitts, I think that we, I know that you, we have to make a decision by, and maybe if you're on, you can tell me, but I think the decision has to be made by um, December, if that's correct.
Yeah, December thirty-first.
Yeah, so I think we still have enough.
You could make a decision after that, but then the contractor has a opportunity to say, well, my costs have gone up and ask for a change order, you know?
No, we're going to make a decision one way or the other by that time, I don't, we might not have the permit, but I think we're going to be in a position to, to make that decision. Because ultimately, I think number nine is, you know, we'll, 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 we'll have enough information from the pumping test to make that decision, even if we don't, even if we have a limited permit, um, it's still going to be worthy, I think, at the end of the day. If, if everything comes out and it's all bad during the pump test, and let's just say we pump a thousand gallons a minute or nine hundred, and we find out that we can only really pump three hundred, then, you know, we'll know that before December. So I don't think that's a big problem.
Sorry, um, Jamie, this is Keith, but quick question, is any of the stuff that you've sort of been managing through over the last month or two in terms of the wetlands and the brown, uh, groundwater and surface water, is anything changing your optimistic or your view on this site, you know, without putting you on the spot, I know you haven't done the testing, but is it, or is this just more the coincidence that, that you and Wolf were just chatting about, the surface water?
You know, I, there's nothing that has diminished my appeal for this site, uh, or our appeal for it. No, I think we're still, we've still got a solid site uh, all the way around, and the fact it's on the property, and we can get the four hundred for protective radius, everything you know, is, is, is good. But um, yeah, I just don't want, I, he's, I've gone down this, you know, and Keith has too, I mean, and Peter has too, we've gone down these paths before, it's the delicate dance that we have with these wetlands.
I'm just concerned about the pump test discharge, because if that's outfalling into where there's surface water now, I can't possibly see how the state would allow that to happen if they knew about it.
Well, they know where our discharge is, they've approved our discharge and our permit to go forward. But with the standing water, they're starting, you know, obviously, that's something that's new, so that's something Don, it's a good question, I think it's something I need to, you know, we need to kind of work through with Andrew Coff in the next couple of weeks. And we may have to have him come down and look at it. So, um, I don't, you know, I just feel that we need to be, I mean, he knows we want to do this with the water, with the water level down, he knows it's in the best interest of the process to do that, um, you know, without. So, we may come up with some kind of compromise in that discussion too, so.
What, what do you think would be the best option if we do need to add more discharge line? Because I know last time it took like three months before, when we said it was going to be available and before we got it, so.
Oh, uh, I don't, you know, we wouldn't ask you to, we wouldn't, we'd have to do it in a different way, I would have to probably maybe, Ron, we'd have to go to three lay flats.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I mean, I don't know of another, I mean, otherwise, we wouldn't want to go with the more, what's the di- dimension of the pipe that you laid, twelve inch?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't order more twelve inch to go that route, we'd have, because it's, you know, I don't think they'd be valuable, but we'd have to go through, right now, we're giving you the lay flat pipe, essentially, we're li- we're we're get, letting you use it for free, because that's stuff that I own, but um, I'd have to go out and find some more lay flat and add it to it another thousand feet, right, because I got two thousand feet out there now, because it's two lengths, I think that's right, Ron, is that correct? We got two thousand feet?
Uh, yes, thousand for each, each length, yes.
Yeah, so I'd have to find another thousand feet of lay flat, and maybe, like you said, Ron, at the beginning, maybe we've got a maybe we have to get two thousand and add more lay flat to that, to get it further out. Um, but I, I, I really want to have, um, I've got, I want to have um, uh, Andrew, uh, he probably come down and take a look at that if I need to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of think it's an important thing, because if it's something that they're aware of after the pump test is done, and they say, oh, well, this event validates the whole test, then kind of don't want to be in that position.
No, and they've been there, I've taken them down there before, I've, you know, not to that spot, but, you know, I mean, you were with us, like, right? Don, when we went out and visited the site, but they haven't been at the actual discharge, but they've seen, you know, these.
Yeah, I mean, we stood around the well and looked down the hill, and they, I'm sure they didn't, you know, go into the weeds, literally.
No, but, but they do have our maps and they had to review our pump test plan, and they have approved it, um, but you're right, I, I, I you know, it's, I think it's.
This is all like new information since the, since that was approved, wasn't it, that there's standing water in there now?
Correct, yep. So, I, you know, I think if it's okay with you, I don't want to belabor it, but I think, I, I think it's worthy of us um, delaying, and I think we could possibly delay into August if we had to, um, and still get the work done and get what Keith and Peter need.
Yeah, but, okay. All right, so I guess we'll hold off, um, I don't know, I think, maybe one, I think we should probably talk to the state and see if we need to extend the, the line out further?
Yeah, I'll, I'll see if I can get them to come down and take a look at it.
All right.
Let, let's see what happens in the, I want to get our equipment in there to see if I'm getting some more equipment in there, and then have them look at it and say if that's acceptable as, when they come down at the same time, so.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions, anybody?
Good.
Um, just one other thing on a side note, if I could, um, on the, on the, the issue that came up, and Don and I uh, kind of communicated about this, this is the brownfields, I did get a call from Lon, Lon Woods, and he has asked for me to set up, or asked to meet with him and the um, town manager in, in the middle to late July to talk about the brownfields one more time.
Yeah. I think their main concern was if, if they ever had to take ownership of the parcel, that legally, they probably wouldn't ever do that, so.
No.
They kind of want to know what the town obligation is on this, and I think is what the big question was.
Right, and the goal here, maybe this is something they didn't get, this, the goal is to get somebody else to buy the brownfield property and put it on the tax base again, because they, the town's not going to take, nobody wants that liability, but there are lots of businesses that are out there looking for discounted properties that have contamination, that, that give them a clause of no liability. Um, and they don't care about the contamination, they just have an operation that they want to use, and so that's the whole purpose, just to get it back in the tax base. Once they get that, I think they'll be, and I explained that to Lon, and he, he said, oh, okay, that makes more sense, so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, well, great, thank you, and I'm sorry that this isn't better news, but it's not bad news, it's just that it's, it's, it is what it is, and we've got to try to address it.
You just can't find a drought when you need one, I guess.
All right, thank you so much, guys.
Glad the sun didn't go down on you, so that, thanks for uh, getting in, getting in this meeting with us.
Thank you, have a good evening, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye.
Bye.
Please, please stop share, I stopped sharing, so I didn't shut your meeting down, okay?
Yeah, oh, that's right.
Yeah, all right.
For that, yeah. I know we want to get to um, underwinds before the rate increase, maybe we can just finish on the um, treasurer's position. I know you had, Michelle, you had uh, the investment policy in here, I don't know if, if that's going to take any time, maybe we can postpone that, or?
It's going to be really short, it's the same one, it's just, we just review it, yeah, no changes.
All right, so you had a question on the treasurer's position, Ron, whether we should be involved, if you asking the commissioners if we want to be involved with the interview, is that what was?
Yeah, so we could post, get candidates and then set up interviews, is that the plan?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'd want to be part of the interview necessarily, but maybe one of us.
Or maybe have them do the initial interview.
Your first round.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, then the, you know, whatever candidates they have afterwards.
If we have one, hopefully.
Uh, and also too, as I outlined, that some of the duties can be delegated, or sort of done in collaboration. That's where I'm almost wanting to leave the stipend flexible, depending upon what the person agrees, if when we get candidates, um, that we want to make an offer to, you know, what are they agreeing to? Um, I think they need to define what they would prefer to delegate and what they would want to take on in the role, just because it, it changes the amount of commitment, and so I think that the stipend should be adjusted accordingly.
So right now, if you're going to advertise the duties and the stipend based on the same duties and the same stipend we've had in the past, is that correct, or you, you already proposing to change that around?
Um, I'd like some flexibility in it, because I think if the, the RSA does allow for the deposit duties, investment duties, record keeping and reconciliation to be delegated to internal staff. It allows the treasurer to do that, I don't know, and I'd probably have to touch base with legal if the board were wanting to define that certain things can or can't, I.
Because that's what I was confused before, because you were talking about adjusting the stipend and changing the duties, so that's why I didn't know if you were trying to take some duties that were in the, on the list of the sec- of the treasurer to do and assign that, take that away. I wasn't exactly following what you were talking about, but I would be more in favor of just leaving, at least initially, the request for the position being consistent with what it was.
When it was.
With the same stipend, because that, I mean, that, that, again, that's what I was under the impression, Warren Articles was just going to say, listen, this person was elected, now this person is appointed, and I think if we start trying to shift duties around and way and all that.
The duties are defined per the RSA, there's the flexibility to delegate, and so that's where if the person chooses to delegate four of the major duties of the treasurer position. I just felt.
Delegate the treasurer.
I'm kind of confused when you see delegate.
It's written in the RSA, the treasurer can delegate the four duties of deposit making, investment, record keeping, and the reconciliations to an MBD staff.
I, I just, I mean, if you, I, I'm, here you, you're interviewing a person.
Yes, which we currently have, we have a mix.
And then, yeah, they can choose what they're going to do and not do, and let them do it and keep, and get paid the same amount of money.
That's where I was saying, perhaps we look at the scale, a sliding scale for the stipend.
I, I, I agree, and, 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 you know, the funny thing about all of this is, this whole process to me is like somebody lighting a fire, throwing it, and then walking away from it a little bit. I'll, I'll be honest with you, that's, because I know it's, it got voted in by the voter, okay? But, you know, we have, we have heard, the board has heard, that this is becoming increasingly common for municipalities to appoint a treasurer, right? That, that there was a statement made here in the meeting a couple of months ago. And I, I think I actually asked at that time, well, shouldn't then also there be some kind of pool of people, of candidates, that are, you know, bringing this away from a volunteer and elected official position to this, you know, appointed position? Shouldn't there be also almost a pool of people of different municipalities where municipality A, you know, and say for example, the financial director of municipality A volunteers to be that appointed treasurer for municipality B, and, you know, and by, you know, going, going around the room here basically, and, and, and three municipalities having the circle of, of, of appointed treasurers. You would almost, you know what I mean?
I think it's almost, it's, it's difficult because of timing.
It's really an awkward process, in my opinion. I, I really don't like it at all. Because it's, it's, you know, it, it's putting this elephant in the room of no longer asking the public to volunteer for an elected office, right? And then receiving a stipend for performing that office, which by the way, significantly higher than the, the board of commissioners stipend. But it's just, just a side note, but again, it's, it's almost, and I've, I've seen this coming, and I mentioned that in, in one of the prior meetings, you know, we, we have this vote out there that takes away almost the obligation for the public to contribute by volunteering, right? Brings it into an appointed position now, and now we're sitting here like, who do we appoint it to, right? And, 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 and what are the responsibilities of the position? It's, it's, it's kind of a process, a path, and it develops its own dynamic that I don't like at all. Because now we're saying we're going to delegate either by appointing somebody from, from within the team, which we already said we don't want to do, but we can still delegate some of the tasks to Steph anyway.
That'll be up to the treasurer.
I know.
Actually, it's written, it's actually written in the RSA.
I know.
It's not, it's, it's not per.
I know.
Our choice, and that's why I'm even wondering, I'd have to double check with legal if that choice solely resides within the treasurer, or if the board would have any saying and saying certain things cannot be delegated.
Yeah.
Um, you, I mean, you do have to approve the delegation. But it's literally written in the.
Right, but, but it's the same. Today's treasurer could do the same thing. She could decide to appoint other people to do certain of her tasks.
Delegate, yes, delegate.
But it would be under the board's approval to.
We have a deposit delegation. We currently have the deposit function that we did the delegation.
So this is really nothing different than what exists today.
It's written, it's written per the RSA.
Right, I guess my point is.
Talking about, just to be aware of it.
No, the problem is that right now, you know, until recently, the board or MBD basically would have to go out to the public and say, hey, we need a treasurer, right? Can you please apply and get elected, right?
Yeah.
Now, we have to go out, and now it's, it's basically turned into a paid position. And now we have to make it a lot more attractive, right? Because now it's basically kind of an employment, right?
It's, it's an appointed position, and it's still by stipend, and I have, I don't see anything that would justify increasing the stipend.
Oh, but are we going out to the public and say, please apply so we can appoint you? I don't think we are, right?
Yes, yes.
We advertise just as we would for any other position.
Yep, I'll be posting, we usually post to Indeed, the various.
Right, but those are all employee, employment resources. Those aren't, you know, those aren't, those, that's not like the union leader where we normally would have posted in an elected treasurer.
So I can also, we can also maybe do something on Marimac TV as well.
I think we do, right, and, and, and the Facebook page, the email, the news, I'm sorry.
No, we absolutely.
We usually post that we have openings on the Facebook page, and on our website, we go to New Hampshire Municipal Association, and an array of waterworks associations that, that offer support, you know, when we're looking for this role, the New Hampshire Government Finance Offices Association. We're part of, of an HR group in the area also.
It just feels more and more like it's, like we're, we're, we're on a process to turn it to, into an employment position, you know? Like, i- it really has that smell to me quite a bit, and, and.
I think the biggest.
That wasn't the plan, right?
I, I understand what Michelle's saying, it, I guess us hearing that, well, they get to choose. Like, I never, I didn't hear that before, where whoever are, are acting treasuries now or in the past. So it, 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 when, when it's being discussed, now it's starting to sound like you're saying, well, this person's got to decide what they're going to do. Well, they owe, they, the past, they always did that, like you were saying, but nothing has changed. So I, I guess this us talking about it, it's like some things we, I guess, we didn't realize. That, you know, that, you know, a person can delegate.
Well, if that delegation needs our approval.
Right.
But that, I wasn't clear on that, so.
We don't.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't think.
You have signed off on a deposit delegation, and as I said, some of the other functions are done in collaboration. And part of our reasoning for going from elected to appointed was also actually to ensure that.
Be a qualified candidate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That we could add in the qualifications, which I think that's actually important, and I, I think that has been a driving factor for many.
So I'm under the impression that what's going to go out for a request is going to be the same duties as what's currently done by the secretary, by the treasurer, and, I mean, I don't.
Give me a complete list of duties, nothing, including the ones not delegated, including the ones delegated.
Correct, and then a reference to a specific, and it'll, it's referenced the.
There was a workaround for, you know, timing and stuff.
Okay.
So certain things were delegated, like the current treasurer can't get in here to do deposits during the week and stuff. So that was delegated to Shell.
So this is going to be, so that task is going to be put back into the treasurer's description? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it will be, yeah.
It could still be farst out the way to act of what it is today, right? I guess I'm good with, I just, I'm good with keeping what we have, and I understand it's going to be an appointed position. If there's some discussion about, well, I don't want to do this, I don't want to do that either, I, obviously, that needs to come back to the board. But I would hope, I would hope the candidate wouldn't want to be playing, let's make a deal here, and just wants to take the job that's offered or not, you know? So, I don't know.
Well, I, I, when it comes to a question, for any changes of pay in this kind of position, I mean, like, for instance, for us, I mean, we can't just give ourselves raise, it was something be, would have to be voted by the voters, correct? For the, for the, no?
Yeah, and actually, as I said, I, I wouldn't see any, anything that would justify raising the stipends. As I said, if anything, I was talking about.
Right, you said.
Having it slide the other, the other way, depending upon any delegation.
Transfer to, to the staff instead, yeah. All right, I think I understand better now, so.
So we can finalize the job description, and it, we can get it posted, and we can give you a listing of everywhere that it's posted. And then any suggestions for, for further posting, send our way?
And who's currently acting treasurer? Is it still Kathy Stack, or is it still?
Yes, so.
It is, because I know Lynn Christensen had also offered to, to fill in temporarily, so I wasn't sure.
No, Kathy had agreed, and there's a lot of transition. Everything from all signing on all of the accounts, all of the online access setup. So where Kathy was willing to do it for a few months, that really would save us, save us some time rather than have to go through two transitions.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah.
That was our main.
Yeah, yeah, sure, and no objection, so, just didn't know.
Okay.
Is everybody good on that? Any other questions? All right, so investment policy, I think, next?
Yes, the investment policy has no changes. We had changed it a time back where that we could do investments both to the deposit pool and authorized banks for the RSA, related RSAs, and that still stands. So we just do an annual review and reapproval of the investment policy.
All right. So.
So we would just need a vote that you accept. Now, this says, this says revised on the second page.
That's because you wanted to change last year.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to accept that non-revised investment policy, like we revised it last year in, in the same language that we approved last year. I get it.
All right, motion by Wolf, second by Ken. Any other questions?
Nope. And that's under the premise that it did not change from last year, just to be clear.
Great. We'll do a roll call vote, then we'll start with Wolf.
In favor?
Ken?
In favor.
John?
Right.
And myself in favor as well, so that's 400, no extensions, oppositions? Hey. The IT policy, I don't know if. Yeah. Can we table this to the next meeting, or is that, is there any time critical on this? Is that going to be okay if we do that?
Yeah, we just have to go in at the end of the month with the emergency plan, and it can be, it can be revised later on. So as long as we've got something in there, start us.
Okay, so it's, you know, it's pretty long, I'm sure we're going to, and, and I'd like to get Keith here to talk about the rate increase before we have the public hearing in 25 minutes. That's all right, we'll table the, the information technology, technology policy until the next meeting. Was that it for you, Michelle?
Yes, and it listed the credit card policy, but we'd actually decided we had some additional revisions to make. And with the full agenda, we're going to push that off to the next.
All right, good.
So we're tabling that, too.
So we'll table that, yeah. Anybody cold? No.
We could, kind of down a little bit, yeah.
Like. I could go get a coat. All right. Any other questions you need us for? Michelle? Okay, so I think.
66 wasn't good for you.
Funny, when you're outside, it doesn't bother you, but for some reason, on inside, it's cold. All right, so I guess we're moving on to Underwood Engineers. Anybody out there? Keith?
Hello.
Do we want to start with the, the rate increase item, just to get past that and make sure that we have enough time before a public hearing at seven? Does that sound like a good idea?
Sure, I can, I mean, I can show you what we have, have prepared.
I don't think it's going to be 25 minutes long, but let's get it out of the way first, and then want other stuff. Where was?
You want me to just jump right in, Don?
Yes, please.
I, I think we're going to be, we'll speak, you have the hearing at seven, and at that point, we can really speak to the same thing that we spoke to at our last meeting last month when we, we did that. I have five or six slides I can share them real quick to show you what.
Keith, your, your audio isn't all that great. Is your mic, mic maybe covered?
Let me try, let me try again. Is that better? Is that any better?
Not a whole lot, but it's not, it's not bad, but it's not great either.
All right, well, if I have to take my headphones off, I will.
No, keep going.
We can hear you.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll, I have some background noise here, that's why I got these on. But I, I can share my screen if Jill gives me permission.
You're all set, Keith.
Thank you. All right. I think, can you, can you see that?
Yes.
All right, this is really what we spoke to last time, so I was just going to remind folks that there was a rate presentation we did back in preparation of the Warren Articles in 2019, so this is a slideshow from that. We've now updated it in consideration of the rate increase we need for the ongoing costs for not only the budget, but for the PFAS project, and also the consideration for the conservation rate. Back in 2019, we had recommended a rate increase for both budget needs and 14 and a half million petition Warren Article for the PFAS facilities. In white is what we were proposing, 13% in 2020, 13% in 2021, those were for budget needs. 40% in 2022 at that time was what we believed we needed for the PFAS facility debt and O and M. So an overall rate increase to 79%, that's what was presented at the annual meeting. What we did in 2020 was did the 19% nothing for this fiscal year, but now we're proposing a 22% rate increase, which represents mostly budget increase items. Little less than 5% of that 22 is related to PFAS, maybe less, depends on how the costs actually play out. So so far, we're 45% into what we thought we would be overall, so it's not, you know, there will be more rate adjustments going forward once the PFAS costs are all fully understood.
Keith?
Yeah.
I would like to say something to that for, you know, put it on record, if you want to go back. So just to, to repeat that, these rate increases were proposed and presented to the public in, when was it, 2019? Right, as part of preparing the decision of the public for the petition Warren Articles, right? So these rate increases effectively have been giving a go, not in the legal sense, but in a, in a general sense, right? At that meeting by voting these petition Warren Articles in place, right? I think that's, that's a statement that needs to be made. So basically, at this time in 2019, when voters approved the Warren Articles, that basically mandated MBD to put PFAS filtration and even iron manganese filtration in at the remaining public wells at the time, right? Those rate increases as projected here on the screen, 13% in 2020, 13% in 2021, 40% in 2022, and a total of 79% increase by now, pretty much, well, by 2022, has been non-bidingly accepted, right, at the time already? And we're trading the 79% by really going to 45% in 2022 total, right? So I don't know if that makes it clear, but I think that's, that's, that's a statement that needs to be made. So those numbers here, the 19% already done in 2020, that was higher at the time than projected. But the 0% in 2021 and the 22% in 2022 are significantly lower than basically accepted by the voters in 2019.
That's all right, that's all correct, Wolf, that's exactly right. When they voted, when they cast their vote in 2019, they knowingly did that with an anticipation of up to a 79% rate increase.
Correct.
And it was not only presented once, it was presented twice. It was presented at the budget hearing and the annual meeting itself.
Yeah.
What we are proposing now is a 22% rate increase that changes the rate that's currently $2.32 per hundred cubic feet to 2.83, that's 22%. We are now also going to be instituting a conservation rate structure in an effort to keep messaging on water conservation, and in a, in an effort to charge people who use more than the typical, primarily for irrigation and so forth, a higher rate. And so we have a second tier that will be in place for those who use more than 3,000 cubic feet per quarter. And then the meter charges and hydrant charges will also go up 22%. An average user in Marimac would hit a 200 gallon, who uses 200 gallons per day, and that is about the average in Marimac for residential, their rate will, their annual cost will go from 3.75 to about 4.58. State average, if you go on the state's website and you plug in 200 gallons a day per for a user, the state average for that user is 5.77, so. For a user, the state average for that user is five seventy-seven, so even with these rate increases, Merrimack is below the state average by, by quite a bit. If you use more than two hundred and fifty gallons per day on average, that's that three thousand cubic feet per quarter. You will be charged a ten percent higher rate for the amount of water that is above two fifty. And this is the rate schedule that will, if passed, will be put on the website. It's all a current rate structure, just twenty-two percent higher. And it adds this tiered structure up here where we're at over three thousand, we have a ten percent higher consumption rate. I can show this later if people are interested, but a lot of the reasons, as Wolf was just talking about, that the rate. Didn't happen as quick as we thought is because the debt service is actually hitting us later than we thought. Or than we budgeted, so that's one of the big reasons why. The rate increases are lower now, this is also a funding sources for the warrant article. The loans and grants that we did receive, probably don't need that one, but. And that was really all I, all I had, thought I'd keep it short and sweet, see if there was questions.
Any questions on anyone, by anyone?
I, I. I'm trying to remember on the last, when the last time I looked at my bill, but does it have, when we look at our bill? How many gallons we use a quarter or by month, okay, it does, okay.
Cubics feet.
Cubic feet, yeah, okay.
Hundreds of cubic feet, I think, is the unit, right?
I just, I gotta look at my bill, but I mean, it's, I just look at the dollar amount, I'll be honest, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I just think maybe, you know, with something, you know, with the new structure rate for users over. You know, the two fifty, just kind of have it, you know, kind of give them my idea, like, hey, you're over the average. You know, maybe the little friendly thing, just to let them know when it does go into effect that. They have maybe an opportunity to kind of try and find ways to lower their consumption.
Yeah, maybe that's important to know that any customer can look at their prior bill and their consumption and see if it's over. Three thousand cubic feet in the quarter. And they'll know they would be subject to this additional. Tiered rate, if they use the same amount of water as what they use in that particular billing period.
It will be broken up, you could have that regular rate and anything over at the new rates.
Yeah.
When we do publish the new rates, I think it would be good to have a dedicated PR campaign, or at least newsletter, Facebook posts, whatnot, that. That. Revisits the fact that irrigation is doubling, tripling, even with the, even odd even ban, right, or restriction. Even with the odd even ban, ban in place, if people generally abide by it. We still double and at times triple our water consumption over the summer. And I think it is important yet again to make people realize that this is PFAS-treated water. Right, that they're spraying on their lawn, right? So the, the fact that we irrigate, and I'll say, again, I irrigate too, right, this hits me as much as anybody else. The fact that I irrigate causes us. Collectively to pay for PFAS filtration of all water that we consume in town, right? So the tiered rate and that, 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 that added cost impact for, for irrigation. Is really meant to protect people that use water for living. From undue. Impact of cost of PFAS filtration. I think that is something that needs to be explained. It's not because MBD doesn't have enough water, it's not because. You know, because MBD is, is trying to, to make revenue and make money, it's to protect. People and families that use that water for living purposes to pay. For the somewhat unnecessary act of irrigation, we're irrigating with PFAS-free water, right? That's, I think that has to be really, really clear to, to a lot of people.
So we're gonna do a postcard notifying of the rate increase. So probably that would not fit on a postcard, so probably a write-up for our Facebook page, is that what you're thinking, or?
Newsletter, I wouldn't be opposed to even have a separate postcard, I know it's gonna cost us, what, fourteen hundred bucks?
You might, you might be able to do something real, kind of concise a little, a little bit.
I mean, we're gonna get flack for it, we know that, but, but I think it needs to be understood.
It's gonna be well explained on the, on the website, just website for additional information.
Yeah, that's a good.
People still don't go there, yeah, I, I write MBDwater.org five times a day on the Facebook forum. And people still get surprised, what, this website? It's terrible, but it's just the truth.
Just stay off the website, just stay off of Facebook, Wolf, you'll be fine.
I know.
That's the answer. The only other question I had was, and I think, I think I asked this before, so we're gonna read the meters at the end, you know, very last day of June. And then for someone who gets. A bill. Is everybody gonna get a bill in July?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so it's gonna be all kinds of confusion all over again this year, and I think I asked if there's a way we could just do, you know. May, June at the old rate and then July at the new rate, send somebody the bill in August, you know, for that particular billing cycle. But I was told it's harder to do that for some reason.
And you can't do that, it's gonna be all the same.
That's unfortunate, because that, I, if I remember correctly, the biggest concern was people were confused, they were getting double billed, because they got a bill in the. Yeah, getting, instead of getting four bills this year, they're getting five, you know, quarterly or whatever, so.
Month pulling.
That's why, yeah.
Well, it doesn't fit on there that this is a partial bill, if it's, if it's not their normal cycle. Only for one month, you do the rate changes for two months, only does for two months rate change. So.
So that's really a limitation in the software that doesn't allow that, or is it just?
Yeah, you can't have two separate, two different rates on one bill for the same code.
Right.
Under a different time term in there?
No, so if they're residential, they get the residential high, and if they get the residential, residential, all those codes will be at whatever rate. You go to commercial, commercial? Market tile, market tile, commercial, those are different codes.
Okay. So it doesn't allow you to do different codes in the same bill, or whatever?
There's different codes, but it doesn't let you use that code to do two different rates.
Okay. If you say so, that's unfortunate, because that's gonna be. A hundred calls just because of that.
Can we add? The second page to bills that are being sent out, it's kind of too late, right, because, actually, yeah. It's too late now, because we already.
Had to have started.
In March, right, right, April. April.
All right. That was the only question I had, I don't know if the other. Questions got answered.
I guess that, that postcard needs to explain that yet again, right, that some users, some customers will receive.
An extra bill.
An extra bill. Specifically those that aren't in the.
Two-thirds of our customers, basically.
Yeah, basically, yeah.
Or that's not their regular.
That's not their cycle.
Any customers that aren't being billed in July will receive a second bill in July.
But we're still, we're still percentage behind where we were said we were gonna be, which is good.
Yeah, as far as the increases are?
Yeah.
There was actually a question, Keith, those five hundred seventy-seven bucks, is that the? The updated New Hampshire average, average rate, because I know the other day we said that the updated New Hampshire. Well, that the New Hampshire average rate went up quite a bit since 2019.
I went on and actually looked at that one today, right on the Hampshire DES dashboard, so. It is from this morning.
Okay.
All right. Any other final questions at all, or? Got another five minutes to go. Nothing more that you needed to present to us on that one, Keith?
No, I mean, I have other things, and, you know, depending on questions that come up. You know, we can go through them, but that, that's all I was gonna do when the rate hearing comes up.
Okay. Maybe while I have you here in the next five minutes. Do you? We talked about this. Last week at the Wells Four and Five Treatment Plant. But what's, what's the update on the PFAS that's breaking through? What, can you, can you give us an update on that, I don't know if you have that in front of you, I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't, but.
I do have some information on that. That, that vessel as of the end of May, which was, I think, the last time we sampled, has, has the lead vessel at four and five, well, both vessels have. Treated eighteen thousand, almost nineteen thousand bed volumes. And we do have. PFBA that has now began entering the lag vessel. But everything else is being removed. In the lead vessel, everything else that's being measured, and the PFOA is. Right between the twenty-five and fifty percent quartz, I believe.
What do you know about the seventy-five percent port, is, is it just PFBA going through that, or is it, is it any other compound?
Uh, let's see here, it says here, six, six of the eight compounds in the raw water have passed the twenty-five percent sample port. I might be able to look that up, Don, while we're waiting, because I don't have that right in front.
Yeah, I know this is kind of a surprise, I was just trying to fill in the last five minutes on it. On a topic that wasn't on the agenda, but I definitely wanted to ask you about.
It would only take me a second if you'd like. Because I do have that.
And.
Okay. Yeah. Well, this is, it has not been updated yet, but as of. The end of April, I think it was. We have at the. Well, we can look at it again, this is the same, all I have right now is on the same chart we looked at a month ago.
Okay.
So I'm not sure that there's any new here, other than what Lynette gave me this morning, that says. Six of the eight compounds in the raw water have passed twenty-five percent sample port, still no PFOS or PFHX. TFHSS going through the vessels at all, so the only thing that's left past the lead vessel. Is the.
PFBA.
PFBA.
Okay. All right.
Still not going into the water, it's still, it's gonna.
Going into the lag vessel, right, right, exactly.
Yeah, you're getting all the PFAS below tech before an entrance to distribution.
Right, okay.
Well, and to add to that, because it's a non-regulated compound. We're not. You know, legally bound to do something about it, right? Now, the warrant articles, obviously, and the general consensus in the public says they don't want any of that stuff in the water. So we do need to talk about what do we do about it.
Yeah, and one of the things Lynette suggested for me, and Ron, I'm sure is already thinking about it, is we may start sampling in. The ports on the lag vessel, now that we've already, we've got some, some entering, and then we need to schedule and talk about when you're gonna want to swap it out.
Yeah.
Right. All right, I just looked at the to-do list, action items. While we have Underwood here, and the only thing that was on there was the cost of service study, and we'll talk about that. Probably after the public hearing tonight. So what's the official time here, I got six fifty-eight, you guys got? All right. We can. Start getting ready to proceed with that, I think, then.
Well, you have, as you're getting ready, do we have any indication, Jill, or anybody on who would be present? That we know that we will have people here, or is it, you just don't know because of the TV?
Yeah, I don't have, we don't have any attendees in the pod here.
All right. So. Let's see, at seven o'clock, we can, we can proceed with the, with the public hearing, so all I gotta do is basically open the. Public hearing at this point, I think, right? So I declare this second public hearing relative to the Merrimack Village District Proposed Rate Increase, open for comments. The public hearing was noticed, was posted on the Merrimack Village District website at www.mbdwater.org. It was also posted at the Merrimack Town Hall, the Public Library, and the Post Office. The purpose of this second hearing is to allow comments from the public in relation to the proposed rate increase. When all comments have been received, I'll close the public hearing, the board will return to the regular session to complete. Any agenda items not addressed prior to the public hearing. Are there any questions about the public hearing? Seeing none. Sorry, are there any questions about the procedure? So if not, then. Now, at seven o'clock, I will, at this time, take. Comments regarding the public rate increase. If anyone has any comments. Are there any further comments, if you. Want to check if we have anybody online waiting for any comments?
Somebody at the front door, at the back door. It's open, right, it's not unlocked, right?
I was able to get it, okay.
Yeah. Also, questions from the press, I don't see any press available in the queue at all. So I guess if that is no takers on any questions, then seeing no further questions, I'll declare the public hearing closed. The Board of Commissioners will now reopen the session of the Merrimack Village District Board of Commissioners Meeting. I think that was all that was required on that, let's see here. So now I guess we're at the point where we need to make a motion to officially. Adopt these rates. So I don't know if anybody else has this, if you want to make.
Since I'm the only commissioner that was present in 2019 on the board. I should probably take that and stand for my crimes. I move that the Board of the Commissioners adopt the schedule of rates as presented at the Merrimack Village District Board of Commissioners Meeting and Public Hearing of June 21st, 2021. This is the second and final reading as submitted and printed in accordance with Board Policy oh seven dash oh two dash B as in boy. This scheduled to be effective July 1st, 2021.
All right, so that was a motion by Wolf. Anyone want to second that motion?
Second it.
Second by Ken. I don't hear any amendments or anything to the proposed rate schedule. So I guess there, if there's any other questions or discussion on the matter, that now would be the time. If not, then we'll go ahead and call the vote, we'll start with Wolf, since you made the motion.
In favor.
In favor, Ken?
In favor.
John?
In favor.
Myself in favor as well, so that's four zero zero with no abstentions, no oppositions. So I guess we can go back to the regular agenda. And that was. With. Underwood was handling this part of it, and we were talking about. Oh, you can start with anything you want, guys, if you wanted to start with well seven and eight or well two.
Well, what if I do this, Don? Because I think well seven and eight, well two may, may be a little bit more discussion. We did, I could do ESR and the cost of service, those probably, they may take less time, and then we could sort of finish on the treatment. Especially since ESR fifty-four that we had in front of you. I deal. With maintaining these water quality trend charts and also some pilot development that we were gonna do with XDD at Wells Four and Five. So I think, I think that ESR was in your packet.
I think it was.
Yes.
Try to find it.
And we've been talking off and on for a while to, to get something going with XDD, and what this, what this scope does. Is it would develop a plan, the protocols, and the physical improvements needed in Wells. is it would develop a plan, the protocols and the physical improvements needed on, in Wells four and five. So that you could begin piloting various media, media on your own. XDD and Underwood would work together to develop that plan. And then you and your staff could build it. So there would be enough information there for you to, to actually construct it and the protocols to, to start running various pilots if and when you're ready. So that's what this one does. It also, this ESR also provides twelve months worth of our quality tracking as all these treatment plants come back online, raw water and all these vessels, and the vessels in the ports. Uh, for the PFAS and some of the other water quality parameters to help in the decision making. So we put that together for twelve months of track in the ESR. As the two parts to it combined, there, it's nineteen thousand for the, for both. ESR number fifty-nine.
Right, Keith, on the tracking of the water quality information, is this, is this the same information that Emery and Garrett is actually already tracking for us? I'm not, I don't, you probably didn't talk to them about this. I'm not sure if you did or not.
We, we.
I'm trying to make sure we're not trying to duplicate efforts and if we are, if there's a reason for it.
Yeah, I'd have to see, uh, no, there's no reason to duplicate efforts on this, no, for sure. But uh, I'd have to see what they are doing and if they are doing all this. Um, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to do it as well. Um, I wasn't sure I had seen anything from them on the well, but if you're getting it and it was forwarded to us, then yeah, we can, we can shut this back if it's already being done.
Yeah, I mean, what, I mean, what, I don't know if the staff feels any reason to have um Emery and Garrett change over to have Underwood do it?
Well, I mean, Emery and Garrett's got it on now, so he, you wanted to talk to Jamie and see if, if he's got everything that you need. Maybe it's just a matter of forwarding it on to you monthly.
Yeah, and, and is he generating trend chart?
He is, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're posted on our website, but what is he doing? He's doing raw water for our wells?
He's doing all, I send them everything PFAS related. And everything and all our quarterly reports.
He's doing iron manganese, sodium chloride, all that stuff. Did, did we ask you to, to do this or is this something that you thought wasn't, um, you, you didn't, maybe you weren't aware that Emery and Garrett was, was doing this? Is that, is that why you had proposed this?
No, I thought you asked me, but maybe you asked, maybe you asked one of us to do it and they started the process, so, yeah.
It might have been. I'm trying to remember where this came from.
It's not, I'll double check with Jamie because if I missed that, then that's uh somehow I did.
Well, this is more well four and five and, you know, keeping an eye on the filter media is what, what he's looking at here. What I send, I send everything over to Emery and Garrett, but I'm, I'm not sure if they're, because we've only done January, February, March, April, May, so five months of filter media testing.
Okay, so that's where I was confused. I was thinking this was going to be repetitive, but.
It may be if Emery and Garrett's tracking this too, I could, I sent it to them, but I'm not sure if they're doing charts and such, but I thought it was more important that Keith's team gets it because they're the ones that stop the filter media and dealing with the filters themselves.
Well, the charts that we're reviewing occasionally, they're all, they're all coming from you guys, Keith, right? They're not coming from you.
You've probably seen some both. I mean, I'm looking at your website now and I do see the Emery and Garrett, some Emery and Garrett charts on PFAS.
We're talking about two different.
Yeah, we did actually have both of them at one time. We had them in the same packet.
Right.
Isn't that raw water, Keith, though? Emery and Garrett aren't doing the raw water and we're kind of doing it.
Right, we're doing the finished water too in the port, so we're trending, we were starting to trend everything.
Yes, I definitely wanted you to track the, the, you know, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five percent ports through the, through the vessels and everything. I don't think that Emery and Garrett is doing that. I don't think they should be. I think that's definitely, because you're, you're looking, you're making decisions on advising us what to do as far as media change out based on that. So you guys should be the ones having your finger on that pulse, I think.
Yeah.
So um, I guess the only question I have is if there's anything that's repetitive. Because did you have raw water in here? I mean, one, one data point's probably not a big thing to be repetitive on anyway, so.
We did, we, we were, we were going to trend raw water, uh, for all, all of the wells. So that is in that scope and if Jamie, what I'll do, Dawn, is I'll talk to Jamie before the next meeting. And just make sure there's no overlap here and adjust that thing.
Jamie makes sense for new well development and test wells, you know. I think because they're in charge of that. Current production wells, both the raw water and the, the water in the distribution system and in, in the, in the vessels. That, that to me sounds a lot more like, like what you guys should be doing.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree.
So he should stop basically at one point, right? Once, once, once a test well turns into a production well, he should stop.
Well, I would agree. I think we should, you should maybe make that transition to.
Yeah.
So.
Unless you guys are more expensive.
But Keith, are you doing, are you doing all the minerals too or just the PFAS?
In the scope, we were going to do the iron manganese, sodium chloride, turbidity, alkalinity, alkalinity and pH. Um, and I'm looking at Jamie's charts now. They just got PFOA and PFOS on there. But they are current or at least they're into early twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, he does have charts where he did more param, more PFAS parameters too. They're not, I mean, it's good to know, I guess, what the short chains are doing. Um, but it's kind of hard to see on a graph because it's all kind of right on the bottom because they're almost, they're very low digits, you know.
Be scaled differently.
They could be scaled differently, yeah.
Same charting.
Right.
Do logarithmic, logarithmic chart or scale.
Right, we could do something like that. So is that something we might want to have? When, when to have Jamie not do these going forward?
As long as I've been here, they, they've been doing them, so they have all the historical data.
Well, they've been connecting the data, but nobody's been graphing anything only for a year or so, when I asked like two years ago.
Right, they're wanting to graph.
Anything.
They have all the historical data.
Right, so I wouldn't still want them to get it.
Well, we can look at the cost too before we answer that question, right? Let's look at the cost. Why don't, why don't, why doesn't Keith and Jane, you know, why don't they stick their heads together? You guys, you know, maybe come forward with an idea. What do you guys think makes sense? And then we talk about it and look at the cost. And you hear what you're saying, you want to have that continuity, Joe, right?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
And go onto them for forever, so they've got a lot of history. What, what do they do? Do they just give it up to Underwood?
So I think from my perspective, I definitely want Underwood to track the vessels, the progress through the vessels and the ports. It's just, why don't you talk to Jamie and see if you guys can figure out what makes the most sense on track and the raw water minerals and and that type of thing. And then let us know if, if you need to adjust any of this.
Will do. And we can hold on this ESR until next month, I think. It's because it's, it's not a nine-one-one for the piloting work either. So we'll clean it up, coordinate better and get it back here.
That's true. Um, so on the next part of the ESR, all of the um the bench scaling, pilot testing and everything. I just had a question here. So, so this is basically to sort of coordinate and identify the tests that we want to do and to try and assess what the cost would be for these tests. You're not actually, you don't actually have any tests proposed at this point. Is that right?
No, no, it's developing the plan, laying out the pilot, the protocols for the testing.
Okay.
So it'd be, it's suitable for, you know, Ron and his guys to actually build it and then operate it. They'd have the protocols in place just to make it happen when you're ready.
Anybody have any questions on that? I know this is something we asked you to look at and put together. Just as an aside, I've been, I've been dealing with um Joe Klimic from Purely and he was talking about some PFAS selective anion resin. Uh, that, that's something I'd like to maybe work into. I know in the past, there's been some concern about using that resin for chloride in excess of two hundred, which we are in, in most of our wells. But I'm working on a project with chloride at six and seven hundred and he's still proposing to go ahead and use that. Of course, the bed life is going to be less than what we're getting, but I think it's something we might want to look into testing. So if that's something that maybe one of the medias that I would recommend having you guys look into in the future. I think that would be a good, a good thing to look at.
Well, a lot has changed over the, you know, three, four years since we first started to talk about this and things getting developed every day. And so that, that is part of this, is to go back out and look what's in the, what the industry is doing so that you can start looking at some of these newer medias and see if they are better or different than what was, what we were dealing with three years ago.
Right.
So that's, that's part of the scope and then you can pilot them and then you'll be able to actually test it at a bench scale.
Mentioned that it's a piece, is using coconut crust, something like that.
That's up in Maine, isn't it? The one up in Maine, Kenabunk, Kenabunk Port, do they use a coconut carbon?
Uh, Peter, you probably remember better than I might.
I don't remember that one exactly.
Yeah, not sure.
They're not doing it at peas, are they? Do you know what they're doing at peas? I guess your point is maybe we can look at that too, right?
Yeah, I, I, some, uh, someone I know mentioned it to me, so I was.
But did we do some rapid small scale tests on coconut?
We did.
Yep.
Yeah, we did. And this was the better performing carbon.
Yeah. All right, well, those are ideas that we could revisit on this.
Yeah, then one thing with the resins and stuff, so the RSS, RSSCT could not, you know, the columns are too small for the resins. We had to do some kind of modification on those things. But I think that you could probably go, you know, the, the problem with those is, you know, we had to ship water to them. So if you had water at your, at your facility that you were using, you could certainly put a larger diameter columns in there and I, I assume you can get that to work. But that was, you know, one of the things that was a limiting factor with the RSSCT portion of it with the resins.
Yeah, so in my conversation with, with Joe from Purely, one of the things we talked about was doing sort of an offline test where we take raw well water, run it through a small, a very small filter and, and select a, a flow rate that's within their flux range and an empty bed contact time that they would recommend. And he said, maybe we could set up multiple vessels where we might try changing different parameters and seeing what the results are. So we may want to discuss sort of an offline test like that with, with Joe. He said he had a, a team that would, somebody would work with us on that. Once, once I told him I was a commissioner in Merrimack, then he seemed a lot more interested in more than my little tiny condominium site that I'm working on in Massachusetts. So um I'd like to keep going on that if we can. So I guess what I'm thinking is if we could think of a way to set up a test uh, site, I mean, I think we would just need a raw water source feed somewhere in that plant in the test area that we're talking about that would be conducive to running water through some small test vessels. I'm not sure what he was talking about. I'm thinking maybe like just eight inch diameter. You know, a tiny vessel that someone would have in their house or something, you know, a eight inch or twelve inch vessel.
Yeah, Dawn, uh, in, as you walk down the hallway into the filter room at well four and five. On that wall to your right, there is, we had a raw water line run over to that area. And then we also have a waistline on the bottom, you know, on the floor that goes out to the infiltration basin. So that was set up to do exactly what you're talking about. The only thing is that line that we have running through the floor, uh, we did not connect that up to the raw water piping yet. Uh, but it is run over to the raw water piping, so we just had to make a connection there. And then, you know, make a connection at the other end, but that, that feed line and the waistline is all set up for that area.
All right, so if you want to just relay that request that we would also look at doing not, we're not looking necessarily at limiting this to just rapid, small scale columns?
No, no, that wasn't the intent either, Dawn. Yeah, we're going to have that set up.
Okay. Do we want to authorize them on this particular task right now and then have them get back to us on the graphs if we're willing to go ahead with this task too?
Sure. Right, yeah.
Does that make sense?
It's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
All right.
Keep moving. Peter, you just made a comment um about that raw water supply for the, you know, for that port to set up, you know, modular test columns, basically. Did I hear that right? That this is really raw water and that we would feed the waste of that to the infiltration basin?
Uh, yes, and then, but the waste of it should be treated water, right?
It's going to be what comes through the filter.
Provided the filter works, the media that we picked works.
But it would be no, it would be no different than just dumping any kind of raw water onto the ground though, right?
Yeah, but are we doing that ever?
When we backwash the carbon?
Really? I thought we backwash with.
Backwash or treated water, yeah.
Yeah, we don't backwash with raw water.
But if, like, if, if they ever do well cleaning, so when we did the well cleaning portion of it. You know, that, that got pumped out of those hydrants that were, you know, right they're on the opposite side of the road, right by the plant there. Those are both raw water hydrants that you would, you know, be flowing out of there.
Right.
Yeah.
And we also have online analyzers, raw water that are going.
Raw water analyzers? Yeah, we do have a, well, we have a, we don't have, we have pH, you know, analyzer on the raw water side.
Yeah, and that, but that waste, so we don't have any waste streams going to the raw water.
That, that waste stream from the pH analyzer does go out to the infiltration basin, correct?
But to answer Wolf's question, we are.
Well, well, is this permissible or, or, you know, do we need a permit for that or?
I think we already have a permit.
We, we got a permit for that, that discharge there, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's a good point, so. So we already have a permit to discharge raw water.
I just wanted, it just sounded to me as, as if that's something we need to make sure that we have a permit for, not that somebody's going to turn around and sue us for contaminating the land.
Right. It's already in the, it's already in the well, anyway.
Terry's probably strangling me right now through the phone. But yeah, okay, all right, as long as we have a permit for it, we're good.
All right, for this, so this scope of work is um nineteen thousand dollars for water quali, I mean, I'm sorry, nine, wait a minute.
Yeah, you're not authorized task two, which is nine thousand.
Right. For PFAS treatability and pilot testing pursuant to ESR fifty-nine?
Right.
Eight seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Does someone want to make a motion on that? Motion by John and, and where is that funding going to originate?
Budget.
That's in the budget? Okay, motion made by John. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Second by Wolf. Any other final questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we'll do roll call. John, how do you vote?
How about I?
Okay, and Wolf?
In favor.
Uh, Ken?
In favor.
And myself in favor as well, so that's passes four zero zero, no opposition, no abstentions. Uh, all right, yeah, so you can bring that task one back to us next month.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Dawn, can I add one thing?
Sure.
I, I did look, I just looked on, on our form for the groundwater discharge permit. And we actually listed in there is a future pilot column area going to the infiltration basin. So that was, we noted the floor drains in that room, plus that in there, so it's already taken care of.
Perfect.
Great, excellent foresight. All right. We want to, do you want to keep going on all of these items? I mean, is there, um, we aren't necessarily running, we are behind, but. I think we're all done with any obligations as far as time constraints here, right? We already did the public hearing. There was nothing else at any time constraint, right? So yeah, go ahead. If you guys want to do well seven and eight or well two or the cost of service update?
Can I just ask, is, is the cost of service, we did get a price. Um, can I just ask, is, is the cost of service, we did get a price from Penetra to do it. It is a recommendation in our master plan and it sort of goes towards your, your discussion that you even had with Jamie earlier. Is there a business case for this or not? And um, um, to find out for the Penetra side of things, they require that cost of service. For the uh, Route one oh one A section at Home Depot with the thirty thousand dollar cost. And if we want to also look at the uh, Route three near Anheuser Busch option, it's, it's another twenty. So to look at both options, fifty thousand dollars. It's a direct pass through from their consultant, Ref, Ref Tellus, I think who, who do, who would do that work. I know Ref Tellus is doing one for Penetra or for Hudson right now with Penetra. It would be the same thing. Penetra doesn't charge you anything for it. It's just a direct pass through. Um, they gave us a rough outline of what it would be. I asked if they would get a scope of work. He, he said, you know, if you want to do it, they, you know, there'd be some, something to put together. But this is what he uh, uh, Don Ware had given me to, to get in front of you if you wanted to proceed with it.
I'm not sure, I don't know if I, I mean, I, it's tough, I want to, you know, we're only going with one option from um. Either the Route three connection on DW Highway or the existing booster pump that we have now. At uh, one oh one A. I don't think we'd be doing both. So is there one way we'd be leaning? It does say in here that um, there would be more infrastructure costs that we would have to. Be burdened with for, to upgrade Penetra system if we wanted to use the booster for wholesale agreement. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't have that on the Route three uh, connection, right?
Right.
So in other words, their infrastructure is not geared up yet to supply us. All of the permanent water we would need at the booster pump. But it is already, the, their infrastructure is capable of delivering. Water that we would need at the Route, a new Route three connection, right?
Right, because it's a very close treatment plant and um, they have the infrastructure there because they're serving Anheuser Busch frankly. Um, so they, you know, they, they have a lot of ability to serve water. So to answer your question, if you, you, it doesn't cost you anything to keep the Route one oh one A as. Connection as it is, leave, leave that alone.
As an emergency.
It's an emergency. We know um, that they're going to charge some infrastructure costs if we wanted to upgrade it as a permanent connection. So the, the lesser cost, he also mentioned that the twenty thousand dollar cost for Route three is lower than normal. Because they just did some work for Anheuser Busch. So he said he had some stuff already set up. So if you wanted to just look at one as a permanent long term, there's two reasons to do it, for the lower cost over on Route three. But also, that's the one that they would rather see you use for a long term permanent connection because it's gonna be cheaper and easier for them.
And we definitely would need a pump station there because their system is at a higher pressure than ours, no matter what, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Right.
But the pipes are, I don't know, you know, a few hundred feet apart.
Yeah, so it would be sort of a similar booster station there as there is at um, Home Depot right now, that over on one oh one A?
It'd probably be a little bit more substantial because it would be, you know, one oh one A was emergency one and didn't have all the. Bells and whistles like Turkey Hill Booster does, but um, so it'd probably be a little bit more substantial, but it'd be similar, yeah, it'd be similar.
And he, he didn't get into a number about what their infrastructure upgrade would be. On up for a burden on us, for a cost on us if we wanted to go with the um, with the pump station that we have now as a permanent one?
Not specifically. He told me that it, it had a lot to do with their pumping stations because that's a boosted zone for them as well. So it was more revolving around their ability to serve the water that zone through their pumping station. That's what he was pointing to, another pump or, you know, an expanded station, uh, but not really a cost.
Right. Cause we, we'd be looking at a maximum of a million gallon a day anyway. Is that what we were considering from this particular um?
Yeah, that was the one we were suggesting we would start with um. Because that's what we based on. You, you, we knew you need, you needed a half a million. So with the master plan study, we were targeting a million just to give, give some more flexibility. But yeah, that was the number we were suggesting to look at.
So I guess the question is, is the cost of, that we would need to pay to upgrade their infrastructure. More expensive than a new pump station at Route three that we would build for ourselves? And I'm guessing the pump station at Route three would be more expensive than the cost of their upgrades. In the Penetra system to use our existing pump station. You following me on that?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if it, I don't know, it's easy to, I'm not sure we know enough to say that. But I do know that if you go to Route three, the stations you're going to be building are going to be yours. You control it, you build it. And, and so the costs are going to be controlled by you to some degree. So um, but the only true way to know is one more cost effective than the other would be to do both.
Yeah, I guess so. I'm trying, I'm trying to save ten grand here, but we could, we're making decisions that impact. Tens if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? By not spending that ten grand and guessing at it.
Or over twenty years, millions. So I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's an important decision.
Right.
The Route three one, I, I like the Route three one in the sense that, cause if you put, if you use your existing pump station. And then you got well seven and eight, you got two supplies sort of coming up that Continental Boulevard. If you're over on Route three, you're close to the Penetra plants, a little more, you know, I think a probably a little more stable. Uh, supply coming from then, because you don't have to go through their pump station or worry about Milford. And then now you spread out your supplies all through town. You got another one in that corner of town. You had seven, eight, one corner, four, five in the north corner, and well, two right in the middle, or two, nine in the middle. So you, you really spread things out. So if you have a problem with a main somewhere, you're not gonna have as many problems with it.
Right. That, that kind of answers the question that I was asking about. Is it too much redundancy? Are, are we gonna have the, are we gonna have the one oh one A pump station be like, kind of useless? If we went to a Route three pump station? But, you know, you just kind of, you just kind of presented a good point there that. It's still good to have that backup connection in that part of the distribution system if needed as an emergency. We'll keep, we would keep that as an emergency if we did the Route three one as a permanent wholesale agreement. So, and I guess the real difference is only, it's twenty grand to evaluate the Route three one and another ten to evaluate the. Route one oh one A one?
No, the way he presented it was, it is twenty thousand for the Route three option, thirty thousand for the one oh A option, fifty thousand if you do both.
Oh.
Keep in mind, I budgeted forty.
Yeah.
So we, I mean, if you want to do both, I mean, we just gotta.
Another ten grand.
Find it out of the budget. So it's not a big, um, I don't say it's not a big deal, but you could. Easier than trying to cover the whole amount, but.
But we still, we're still not clear as far as like the, the reliability of that connection, right? I mean, I understand we have, we're gonna have a wholesale agreement, but so does Milford. And we know Milford has, has been less favorably supplied by Penetra than Nashville has been. Despite having a wholesale agreement, right? We, we had that discussion a couple of times. And what bothers me about this still is we're, we're at the mercy of, of something that we don't control at that point, right? The other, the other part of that is. And this, this is maybe something where we need to talk a little bit about a work session here, right? Because it's probably premature to, to, to go into this in, in a meeting unprepared. But, you know, we're spending significant money for filtration. Plans and developing new wells and, you know, we already have another well that's already permitted. We're looking at yet another parcel well um, on Wilson Hill Road, right? And, you know, we're spending four million dollars here, three million dollars there, you know, twelve million dollars possibly here, right? And we're getting awfully close to the thirty dollars, thirty million dollars that we talked three, four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, maybe. At the very beginning of, of my first term, when asked, how much is it gonna cost us to build a new surface water treatment plant? That sucks water out of the river, right? And I'm all for supporting and, and securing the investment we have. Because I also believe it's, it's prudent to have another source of water except for only the river, right? If someday something bad happens, we still have other water that we can supply to the town. But if you, if you take all that piecemealing that we're doing there, which isn't cheap at all, and you add it up. And we keep doing this for the next ten years, we're not that far away possibly from a thirty million dollar investment for a, a surface treatment.
I don't know where you, I don't know, you just throw in four million, twelve million, I don't know where those are really coming from. That's really true that we're.
Well, every filtration plant is somewhere, you know, several million dollars, right? And we have new wells that we need to, that we're looking at to develop.
But I don't know if we've made the decision that we're gonna filter Penetra's water, have we? On a wholesale agreement?
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm not saying that. And we assume that Penetra water is PFAS free, right?
It's, it's not PFAS free.
Right, it's not PFAS free.
But it does meet the standard.
It does meet the standard, but it's not PFAS free.
So we're, we're talking about one of the alternatives on the last um. The normalization alternative.
Right.
That he was doing.
Right, and, and what I'm saying is, I'm not sure if I want to spend fifty thousand dollars or even thirty thousand dollars just for a study. That still doesn't keep us in full control of that supply of water. Cause we're at the mercy in the end. I'm not, again, nothing nefarious, right, that, that I want to insinuate, but.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think there's more of an assurance of water at the Route three connection. Than there would be at the one oh one A connection. If we go with a wholesale agreement here, I'm under the impression that we're definitely gonna get that water allocated to us. And if, you know, maybe that, maybe that's in some kind of the uh, in, in the agreement that we would make. Is if, 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 if Penetra wants to put us on irrigation restrictions, they better be putting on the irrigation restrictions on their own system.
Right, but I haven't heard that yet.
That's the question. I'm with you on that.
Right, and this is not the first time I'm asking that, right? So have we any, any commitment from Penetra that um, that our water supply will be not any more restricted? Than, than, than Nashville's?
Than their core system?
Right.
Yeah, no, we don't, Wolf, and, but uh, you know, the presumption is, and, and I can try to get some confirmation from them. If it helps you make the decision that as Don, as you're pointing out, is if there's conservation restrictions there. You all have the same conservation restrictions. If there's a reduction in supply, we're all impacted equally, not one over the other. That's the presumption. And I can try to make sure that, you know, Don can give me some assurances there that it makes you feel more comfortable to go forward. But typically, when, in the agreements that I work through, that's, that's a pretty standard, that's a pretty standard item. You know, you're in, you're buying supply from them. You're paying money for it.
So there is already wholesale agreements that Penetra has with other municipalities.
Well, Milford, right?
Milford or, well, yeah. And I know, I know Milford was restricted last year, but was that because of the restriction in Penetra's system?
No, Milford got restricted before Penetra core.
But, but Milford is on the leg in the line that had the restriction. That, that's why we couldn't draw.
And I, and I, it may have been an oddball. Because Penetra was having issues.
That's why I'm not sure what the reason for Milford's.
Yeah, but, you know.
We could sub, be subject to the same thing.
Right.
But if it, but literally though, if it's a mechanical problem that causes the problem, which I understand it was. Still not clear what it actually was, though.
My understanding was a closed valve.
Yeah, no, I've heard different things too, but when, the, the note thread that I have was that Don said.
Don Ware.
Don Ware said that the, they lost a pump. That limited their capacity to five million gallons on that side of town, which caused the issues for Milford and for Manchester. They lost the pump. And there may have been some valving issues associated with it. Maybe it was the valve that caused the pump to go down. But essentially, they lost a pump.
Okay. I, I hate to throw.
I think that was my understanding as well, Keith, that they, they lost the valve or the valve was like broken in a closed position. So they couldn't operate a pump. Yeah, I believe that's what uh.
Alright, so can you try to clarify that with Don Ware? Keith, cause that, that's an important sticking point to me and Wolf and probably everybody to make sure, you know, the reliability of. That happening. We have mechanical failures all the time and we can't, you know, we have them in our system. If Penetra had them and we were relying on water from them, then it's just something we have to deal with. But if they restricted Milford's water ir- as far as irrigation ban for any other reason. And they were still irrigating their core system, that's, that's not where we want to be in a wholesale agreement by any means at all.
And I, I, and you know, I don't know if Penetra was, was requiring Milford to, to conserve. I think that was for Milford, because they were, they were flying through water as well.
Yeah. Ken, you had a question?
Yeah, um, kind of, Wolf kind of meant, you know, about the PFAS. Where, where putting money into PFAS free water. And if we're getting water from Penetra, it's not PFAS free. Granted, at this particular time, not all our wells are uh, are up and running filtration system. So that's something we're gonna have to consider when seven, eight, and, and well, two is up and running, when we need to.
It is.
You know.
If that's, if that's, if we're looking for non-detect, even, even below single digits. You know, if we're looking for truly non-detect, then part of the, part of the um, study that Underwood did for us that we reviewed at the last meeting. One of the alternatives was a play, uh, uh, a new pump station over at Route three. And also if, what the additional cost would be to filter PFAS over there. And was that, was that an option that you guys added to that study if I'm not mistaken at, at our request, right?
We did, we did, Don, yet now in there.
Right. So, so we are evaluating that. Cause you might have been thinking, cause that wasn't one of the items we, that was on the list of the alternatives in that last uh, meeting we had. So we're gonna revisit that, not tonight. That, that's, tonight, that's not on the agenda tonight, going over that last report, the, the update to that last report. And just so everybody know, I was on, I was on a call with um, yourself, Keith and um. So I forget her name.
Katie.
Katie from, from Underwood. We were on for about an hour and a half, kind of going through a lot of things.
Yep, and we finalized, we, we dealt with all the comments from you and, and.
Right.
Districts, so that the final report will be issued this week probably. So we'll be able to review it at your next meeting.
So, so just on a tangent, maybe, is that something, do we want to wait till the next meeting? I know, I know it was pretty important that you wanted to look at doing a decision matrix on it and all that. That's something we want to have a special work session on or, I mean, we're getting into July, so I don't know if people are available as much.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right, Don. I, I mentioned to you, to you guys the other day, uh, when I saw you was that. I think there's some visioning. I think Wolf was, was alluding to it. It's not gonna go through this, some visioning and some policy stuff that you may want to talk about too. Controlling your own supplies or not and PFAS levels of load standard or versus non-detect or not, you know, it's um. There's some policy stuff here that's not, it's, it's not all just the, the money. Um, of course, that's a big, big part of it, but I would love to see some sort of a work session where we could just dive into that.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. Alright, so maybe we can think about what time, time of the month we're talking about? We talking about something in July or um. Sounds like a doodle poll coming up possibly, or how does that, does that sit with everybody?
I'm out of the country the last week of July and the first two weeks of August.
Okay.
So COVID won.
So maybe the middle of the month, is anybody away in the middle? I know I'm away the fourth weekend, fourth of July, but um.
As long as it's not fourth of July week.
Right, I don't think anybody would want to do that. Second or third week of July, maybe, just, Jill, maybe to coordinate a doom poll for a, a work session on um. On those alternatives evaluation? Alright, and getting back to um, the cost of service, I guess, in my opinion, I think what I'm thinking is. I don't know that it makes sense to look at a cost of service for thirty thousand dollars at, at the Route one oh one A booster station. If that's on the leg that doesn't have the, the assurance that we're gonna have water available. We have a better chance of having more assurance of water available on Route three. If we did want to consider treating for PFAS on Penetra's water, I don't think we'd have any room to do that in one oh one A. I don't know that we would on Route three, but we probably have more of a chance on Route three than we would on one oh one A, I think.
So ball field over there on Route three.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the areas worth them looking at, but.
Right.
Well, there's um, some construction going on, right, with the uh, auto repair shop that's, that's being built there along Route three. I think there's some, some parcels that have been made aware, available in that area. I think there's some, some parcels that have been made aware, available in that area.
By Harris?
I think so.
That's in their franchise area. Uh, we wanna have it kinda right in between where the, the two points don't connect right now, which I think is that ball field.
That's true.
About.
It's true.
Right, yeah. The state garage area. Which is not like encumbered by developed land at this point. So I don't know personally, I don't know if it's worth doing, I, I think it's worth doing the one for twenty thousand on Route Three. I don't know if it's worth the thirty thousand dollar cost of study for the one oh one A pump station that we already have there, cause I just don't really see that being used as a permanent wholesale pump station. Do you? I mean, if you guys feel different.
One oh one, no.
A one oh one A, yeah.
And I wouldn't wanna spend a dime until we don't have an understanding of the reliability of that. You know, I mean, the worst thing is we have a drought and we need that water and we banked on it, and they cut us off, and then we spend all that money for nothing, so. Until we don't have some clear understanding of, of, of the terms of that agreement, at least as far as that goes, and money might be different, you know, money factor might be a different question, but we gotta, we gotta know that we can rely on this water source if we wanna put money into it.
I will try to flush that out, Wolf.
Okay. So we don't need to approve any of these tonight necessarily, one or the other, or would it?
No, you don't, you don't need to, um, I, you know, I don't see any reason why you couldn't wait till next meeting or after our work session too.
Right.
It helps, I wouldn't have a problem approving the one for Route Three, under the condition that we have some better understanding of the language, of the, you know, of the terms.
Well, probably sounds like we need to ask Penn and Chuck, Dawn Ware, what, what the difference in reliability is from the Route Three connection versus the one oh one A that we already have. And I, I would like him to answer the question about if, if they, if they would actually ever ask us to go into a conservation irrigation, conservation irrigation ban situation, that we don't have anything, that they can't impose anything on us that's more stringent than what they're imposing on their own core system.
And even further, if they would ever throttle that supply back, period, irrigation ban or not, just would they ever throttle it back? You know, to, in, in comparison to what we, what we bought into, really, that's the.
Well, I mean, it depends on the level of drought, if there's this astronomical drought that everybody would need to cut back. I, I guess what I'm saying is, I wanna cut back, I, I wanna cut back only as much as Penn and Chuck's core system is required to cut back. They shouldn't be dumping the burden on us to cut up everything back on our side.
That's right.
And not cut back on their side. So if we can clarify that, I think, I think then we'll be in a position to, um, to move forward. Unless you wanna move forward on it without knowing that answer, but I don't think, I don't think I wanna.
Okay, I will oppose those questions, to, both those questions to, to Dawn.
Alright. Good, uh, so that, let's see. So we, we got well seven and eight, well two left, those are, uh, shorter, I'm thinking, hopefully. Any other questions before we move on from anyone? I didn't wanna jump ahead, okay?
Okay, so, uh, yeah, I'll jump in then, uh, so in your packet, you, um, I, I provided a little summary of what's happening with the vessels at the last meeting. I don't know if you remember, I was mentioning that the, uh, vessels were gonna be delivered. Uh, one was gonna be shipped like that same week. Um, coming in just before Memorial Day, and then a second one would be coming in, the week of the ninth of, of June. Um, unfortunately, when they were shipping them, one of the vessels hit a bridge. It wasn't a blunt hit, it was a, you know, more of a scrape hit. But the scrape hit damaged the vessel, damaged the legs on it, and, um, they, they, uh, turned around, took it back to Iowa. Um, when they got back there, that's why, it took a couple days to get back there, because then they had to re-permit it to get it back, you know, through the, in the states, back to Iowa. But once they got it there, they unloaded it, they did an inspection on it, they loaded up vessel number two. Uh, got permits for that one, uh, took a different route, so they hit the bridge in Ohio. And then they, they rerouted it such that they still went through Ohio, but then they went into West Virginia and up into Pennsylvania. Uh, this morning, they were at the New York border, uh, waiting for an escort on that. Uh, they expect to have that vessel, uh, delivered on Thursday of this week. Okay, so fingers crossed that that gets there. They still gotta get through New York, uh, and then they're coming through Vermont uh, on their way to New Hampshire, because they could not get a permit going through Massachusetts. So, um, look, looking, I know why I'm surprised, so looking at, you know, Vermont, at first I thought they might try to come across Route Nine over Hogback Mountain, but I don't think they're doing that, and thank God, uh, you know, hopefully they don't, because that is a very windy road. But I think they might be going up through, uh, Route Seven up to, um, Rutland. And then from there, they might even continue going north up the mount, up, up to Burlington, where they can get on to eighty-nine. I think though, that is probably the, the flattest road or less curvy road. Rutland to eighty-nine, you can also take a Route Four, but that looks like a windy road, so I'm not sure exactly their routing on that. But, you know, the vessel, you know, that one is, you know, vessel number two is being shipped right now. Uh, planning on coming on Thursday, and, uh, contractor has tentatively set up a crane to set that on Friday. Um, if that does happen, uh, the truck is gonna turn around and drive back to Iowa to, uh, pick up vessel number one. Uh, right now, they have a proposed repair plan for the vessel that they sent to us. Uh, we have looked at it, uh, we are ready to make some comments, uh, back to the contractor on that, but I wanted, you know, because we are so close, we received that last Thursday evening at six o'clock at night, so we pretty much have had it two days. So, um, so I wanted to hold off on it in case, you know, you had any concerns with it. But we're gonna come back on them and, and, you know, and just, um.
What is that? Is that?
Yeah, it's in the additional information.
So if you can see from the pictures, you know, they, you know, that there are some scrapes on the top, but, uh, the leg also hit, and one of the questions I have for them, you know, I, I think the legs that hit were the legs that were up. So I think that those also hit the bridge, um, and compare, you know, we thought initially was only the the vessel body itself. So, um, we have some concerns about, you know, the leg being moved a little bit, they mentioned that the leg got moved three eighths of an inch, so we wanna, we want them to inspect some more welds, uh, especially the welds at the leg, uh, vessel interface, uh, to make sure that those weren't compromised when it got hit. So we, we have, we have some questions for, you know, for them to, to, you know, to look at. I can go into more detail on the questions we're gonna ask, if you'd like to.
Uh, Pete, uh, do they do like a pressure test? Uh, you know, when the, before they ship them, I mean, the other, to check.
Yeah. Yeah, that was one thing that, you know, they, so they had to do that beforehand, and then on the repair plan that they sent back, they said, we're gonna do this fix, so they don't have to do a hydro test on it. And I'm like, on, I think you still need to do a hydro test on it. If you're gonna be pulling apart some of the piping and doing some welds, do another, you know, you know, yeah, it's gonna cost you some money, but you need to do a hydro test. So that was one of the items we were asking them to do. The other one that they were sort of sticking on, uh, is, uh, this was an, uh, ASME certified tank, um, you know, so once it's constructed, then they get an ASME certification. Um, so once you do any kind of repairs on it, you know, now that's not really the same thing. So then what they usually give is an ASMER, which is a, a repair, you know, certification on that. And they were saying that they did not wanna do that, and I'm like, my feeling is that they really need to do that, because it's not the same exact vessel as it was when it left the shop the first time, so it's something different, I think that needs to be documented.
Especially if something happens.
Right, and we're also asking them to document exactly what was repaired on it, so if any future, um, issues come up, we can say, hey, that was, you know, that could have been, you know, if it was a weld that, you know, one of the leg interfaces and all that kinda stuff, then we could, you know, say, hey, we, you know, this could have been caused by the damage here. We're also asking for, um, documentation of what they're doing on the inside of the tank, exactly where they're gonna be fixing the coatings on that. Um, you know, just so that can be documented, you know, sort of, you know, that example is a hundred and fifty degrees in the, you know, in the tank, you know, on the shop, Dawn, there's a, there's a compass on the tank, so a hundred and fifty degrees on the tank, about eight feet up, we did this. Then you have at least an area inside that vessel where you knew they did a repair, so if there is anything in, they go back to them. So.
You know, with, uh, them doing repairs, uh, is there any way we can get like, I mean, they come with a warranty, but is there a way we can get like a little bit extended warranty where they've been?
How it's going to?
You know, where they're doing alterations to it?
Yeah, I've not asked that, I know, I, we have done that on some other things, yeah, we certainly could do that.
So that's a good point, I mean, I was thinking the same thing, it looks like they've quantified dimensionally exactly where the damage was done. So I would like to be able to be sort of absolved that if there's any surface rust or any kind of something that develops in those areas in the future, that i- i- in other areas in the tank are perfectly fine, but it's only the specific area that was damaged that corrodes faster than everywhere else in the tank or something? Is there a way that they would be able to back that up?
Yeah.
Because it's something that would be probably pretty clearly as a result of this damage, right, if it, you know what I mean? If, if it only the places that where it was damaged corrode, then it should be pretty clear that it was caused because of the, the damage and, and the repair wasn't sufficient then. If everywhere else in the tank is okay, except where they made the repairs, you know, is something more we can get from them on that?
Yeah, in terms of the individual rusting areas, what their proposal is, is some of those areas where the paint got scraped off, they would re-prep it, re-prime it, and then they plan on painting the entire vessel.
Yeah.
But they plan on doing that at the shop, you know, and then transporting it. Uh, based on some of the pictures, um, it, it looks like there could be some damage, you know, the rubbing the tank that was sorta on the cradle on the bottom of the tank.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, so my guess is, when this thing gets, you, you know, to the site, you know, there might be some damage on that that's gonna need to be repainted anyways. I know, you know, with the ones we got for four and five, there was some damage on those, and there was some you know, sort of scuffy marks, if you wanna call it that, where we're sitting on the cradle where some of the paint wore off. And, and Penta pushed for, uh, Avoca to paint it, and they ended up repainting the whole vessels when they were on site.
Peter, there's, there's two things that I don't like in this report. The one thing is, uh, they're talking about performing a dye penetrant test to the exterior of the seams.
Yeah.
Why are, why are they not doing that also on the inside of the vessel?
So I'm not exactly positive on how that test is performed, but I'm wondering with the, if the coating system on the inside of the tank, I know it's much thicker than the coating on the outside, so I'm wondering if that, you know, coating system would prevent that.
Yeah.
You know, do you know that testing, that testing procedure?
Well, dye penetrant testing is literally you, you, you slap a dye on the weld and you wash it off, and then you, you use specialized lamps or, or, or
Black light or something.
Black lights and stuff like that, and CP, PC pick it up, if, if the dye is, uh, uh, basically visible in any cavities, and there's more and more involved testing than that, but that's a simple dye test, but.
Yeah.
You know. I mean, the external test, to me, isn't even that important, you know, because externally, the vessel can be inspected and, and repaired easier.
Yeah, I see it.
But, but, but the internal test is for me very, and, and frankly, like, for example, in one picture, and that's the other thing. Um, do you know if they looked into, um, into, I don't, I don't know what kind of material this, uh, tank is made of, but peen hardening, peen hardening? Have they been looking at that? Uh, strain hardening? So, wh- when, when, when you deform steel, right, or really any, any metal, but when you deform steel without it being hot.
Yep.
It becomes brittle.
Yeah.
And on, on a pressure vessel, uh, I see here, top head, close up, slight deformation. And that's, that's on a, and really the same thing on, on the, um, the pipe support clips, right, no, hang on. There was one area that was deformed around one of the, um, either a port or pipes, I don't know, there's one area that got, you know, side shell coupling deformation. Right, so there's a coupling on the side shell that got deformed.
Yeah, so we asked, we asked about, you know, we, we mentioned that, we said, okay, you know, you, you noted that there is some, you know, the one where it says the top shell deformation or something like that. You know, we noted, you know, so that was in the damage report, and we're like, okay, your repair report, you know, excludes that, it doesn't talk about it, you know, so we're saying, so what are you doing to fix that?
Because the, the pipe support clip is an external piece of steel that gets welded onto the surface of the tank, I'm not worried about that.
No.
But the side shell coupling is a, um, pass through, through the sidewall of the vessel. And if there's deformation in that area, that means that whole coupling basically has been bent within the sidewall, right? So again, I'm, I'm worried about, uh, strain hardening of the material, of the base material. We don't wanna have any brittle areas in that tank that eventually may burst, because they're no longer, no longer ductile.
Yep, okay.
So maybe to clarify, the, the interior of the tank was damaged too, because I thought it was just the exterior.
Yeah, that, so the interior did, and I think that might have been due to, you know, you know, so if, if the, if the outer shell got hit, you know, I don't know if, you know, just that, you know, pushing on it, you know.
Dented inside some.
That's good.
Yeah.
So, when I was first told about this, I thought it was just like a strap or something.
Yeah.
That was the original pictures that I saw, it looked just a strap, but once I came back.
Definitely way more, that, when I saw all these pictures, I'm like.
Yeah, that's, that's what they told us, you know, they said, oh, you know, you know, so they, they have a truck, uh, I'm gonna car running in front of it with a pole sticking up, right? You know, so that pole is supposed to be, so this, this vessel is fifteen foot diameter, the bridge that they're going under is fifteen foot six. So they're trying to run at about fifteen foot five, so they have five inches of clearance underneath the tank, you know, be- between the tank and the road, okay? So when they got to this bridge, you know, they, they were supposed to be fifteen foot six, and the pole on the car did not hit it, and when they went underneath the, with the tank, all of a sudden, you know, I guess, they said it was like sort of a grazing hit, and then because the strap sticks up another quarter inch off of that, that the strap got, kinda got sheared off, you know, between the vessel and the bridge. And then the trail car saw the straps, you know, flapping in the breeze, and he said, hey, pull over, there's something wrong. And then they climbed up, and then they saw the damage. So that was what we, we, we heard, and he said, oh, you know, that's when they said, oh, you know, these are the pictures that, you know, scraped a tiny bit and the strap got broken off, but we're gonna bring it back to check it, you know?
So, just for us to understand too, Peter, I think the way you described it to me was, it, it's not like it's on a flatbed. There's actually a hole in the flatbed or a notch in the flatbed where the tank goes down below, and it's, it's literally five inches off the ground.
It has to be, yeah. I'm not sure exactly how the, how the trailer set up, but it was a specially modified trailer that is hanging down low. So yeah, it's a very low clearance, so you can't go over roads that have any kind of, uh, you know, rise in that.
Yeah.
Because you could, you could bottom out, you know, pretty easily, you know? So, you know, that's, that's one of the things I'm concerned about, when we get this tank to the site, you know, inspecting it really good when it gets to the site.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm really getting cautious with that. Um, Peter, I think, can we find a subject matter expert that we can hire to run an independent inspection on this vessel?
That's what I was wondering too.
We, we could.
At their cost?
Well, worst case at ours, but it's better than finding that it doesn't fit here on the building or bursts of room, we fill it up with media. I mean.
Or, or a day after the warranty's gone.
Right. Now, this, this is way, way more damage, but I'm really concerned, I'm really concerned about the hardening. If there's deformation on, on a pressure vessel, usually that's a knockout.
Yeah.
Like if you have a gas tank, for example, propane tank, and it has deformation, that thing is a goner. And granted, this is not a pressure vessel like a, like a gas tank, but we still have serious pressure on it anyway.
Actually, this one would probably, this one will have the least amount of pressure because we're pumping through it into a clear well. So like the four, five is, is the highest pressure that you'll see. Two nine will have less, you know, a little bit less than this is the least, but.
But the sheer weight of the content, I mean, the sheer weight of the water and the media inside of it is, is, is. Do we know, do we have an understanding of the weight of the content?
Um, we do have that. I don't have that at my fingertips right now.
But it's, it's significant for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I was a little, you know, at first when they talked about a graze, you know, like, you know. You know, when Ron and I were first informed of it, you know, I was, I was very concerned, but I was also like, okay, if it's just a graze, then it's probably all right. But then it seems like more than as we're getting the report, you see the bending of the um, of the base plates on the legs and on two of the legs. And I'm like, so I asked, you know, so one of my questions that I'm gonna read in the email, it's like, okay, are those legs? On the bottom or are those legs on the top? So if those were legs on the top that, that hit the bridge. That was a, you know, that part of the leg was a blunt hit, and, you know, did that, you know, blunt hit. Cause any damage with some of the welds between the leg and the vessel?
Right.
You know?
I mean, if they're willing to guarantee this thing, like. I'm almost saying, the only thing I would accept is if they're willing to guarantee that all of the repairs are not gonna be the site of. Any corrosion in the, in the future or any.
Any defect.
Any defect.
Failure.
Because I, I don't know, it just seems. Why we, why would we wanna even accept this thing if it's all, if it's all on us, a hundred percent of the burden's on us, like everything else that we ever do? It's just, you know, I just.
But if they're gonna paint, if they're gonna, you know, if, if they're gonna prime and then paint the whole tank, you're still, you're gonna get a. You know, you'll almost get double paint on everything, and then on that area that got damaged, you'll get a, you know, the normal coat of, you know, normal thickness of paint. You know?
Yeah. But some of those structural, what was there, a leg or something there you were just showing and that?
Those base plates that they, that are bent, they're planning on just cutting off those base plates and welding on new base plates to it. That's their, that's their proposed repair on those.
That's the other thing here, so unfortunately there's no page numbers, but it says the exterior paint repair. Will scuff exterior damaged areas and paint on vessel to prepare for recoating. And here it comes, the exterior piping weldment supplied by Evoqua will not be included, will be taped off. That doesn't clarify if there's damage or the need to repaint any of those weldments supplied by Evoqua. It just says we're excluding those.
Right. And so, yeah, we don't, we don't know if though, you know, so I had a question on that one too, and, and um. Like, I, I didn't totally understand that statement, but I think they're planning on just saying we're gonna paint the vessel itself, but not any of the piping.
Right, which is fine if it, because if it didn't got damaged, right, but, but it does say, it, it, say that here at all. It just says that it's categorically excluded, I guess because it's supplied by Evoqua.
Yeah.
But uh.
I'm a little concerned that no one, none of our eyes have been put on this thing.
Yeah, I agree.
And if this thing shows up and all of a sudden we start looking at it, it's like, what's this? What's that? Uh, you know, I don't know.
At that point, it's too late.
Yeah, we've already accepted it at that point.
I mean, you would think that an insurance adjuster had already an eye on that too, right? Because somebody's gonna pay for this, this.
Yeah, I'm not sure um. That had not come up yet.
But I, I really think we need to pay somebody to go out and have a look at that thing.
Yeah, so it's gonna delay acceptance of the second vessel. It's gonna delay the contractors finishing up out there.
Again, the.
Can, is, there's no, they don't have another vessel, these are all special order, one year, whatever.
Yeah, they're spec, they're special order than a fifteen foot vessel, like, you know.
Can we say we don't want it? We want a new one? It's gonna take a year, but, you know, I don't know how we would ever do that, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Evoqua's having a tough time with its fifteen foot vessel. I think they're gonna be thinking twice to uh, use it again, you know?
Yeah, I think so.
They should, you know, and when Calgon was noting, you know, you know, a fourteen foot vessel, they said, that's the biggest we can put. You know, you can't do a fifteen, you know, and we go back to Evoqua, you sure we're here and you can't do fifteen? Oh yeah, we have done fifteen. And they have done fifteen, you know, but I don't, you know, it was installed in Texas, but I don't know what highways they were going, you know, going through or what, but. You know, I think their, their toughest trucking is from here, you know, from where they are out, you know, getting through Vermont and all that kind of stuff.
I, I think this is one where we should look into legal representation.
Okay.
What, what, what is our contractual warranty that they, you know, what, what is the liability for the damage? And, and how do we ensure that we're not getting the short end here? I don't know, what do you think? But. You know, what kind of warrant, what is the warranty language in the contract? What, you know, and, and, you know, the last thing I want is anybody basically saying, okay, we're not gonna provide it to you. So you're screwed, right? So we have to, we have to understand our contract and our language.
We can.
What legs are we standing on, right?
Where there is damage, maybe we cannot say, well, we want a discount.
Right. I mean. There's a lot of exposure that we have here right now. And I, I, I think I would, would like to have somebody that has read the contracts and the warranty and liability clauses and, and. You know, for example, who, when, when is the transfer risk, for example? Do we know?
No.
What, 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 what inco terms were these shipped under? Is this even, you know, were these shipped X works and are actually our liability now?
No, the contract liability.
Clearly theirs, um, until it's, it's, you, you accept this.
Well, okay, but, but do we know the inco terms? Do we know what the contract says? We assume a lot right now.
What is the term you're using? Well.
The inco terms, I N C O and the shipping terms.
It's theirs, um, it's, it, 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 they are responsible for the entire site and the equipment in it. Until we accept it substantially complete. There are defective, uh, deficiency clauses in here, and I was just looking it up right now too.
Well, the transfer of risk, for example. When is that happening? What's the, what, what are the AGB saying, other, the terms and conditions?
I'm not sure what you need. I mean, my interpretation of this contract is the risk is on them.
Right, but where does it say? So, trust me, I've been through this so many times. We need, we need to know the shipping terms, you know, I mean, they're, they're defined on a global scale. We need to know the shipping terms, the inco terms. And we need to know, we need to know the terms and conditions that determine the, the transfer of risk, because sometimes they actually collide with each other. Sometimes your general terms don't match your inco terms under which you ordered, like, is it FOB, is it X works? All those inco terms, they determine the transfer of risk and liability. Risk of transport, you know, even risk of receipt.
Sounds like we should hire you to look into this.
No, no, that's fine. That's why I'm asking somebody does that, because I don't have time for it.
I know, I know.
Well, just remember, we, we Underwood Merrimack District had nothing to do with the order, nothing.
Right.
So, um.
I don't know how it would be anybody but uh, the contractor, cause if, if, you know. If he's paying for all that and you're not taking it over till it's functioning, till it's substantially complete, which would be. You know, in that November timeframe, and it's, it's in his, it's his responsibility.
You're talking about the general contractor?
Yes, I am, yeah.
Right, well, but again, we don't know what deals and what, what, what terms and conditions they signed with.
No, we are not, we do not.
And, and, and then we don't know what Evoqua designed with U T, U T F or whatever they call. So we're at the mercy of all of that in reality.
So, should it be the contractor who's? Also on the hook for investigating some of this?
You would think so. I mean, we're kind of.
Like if we find a defect, if we find a defect after the thing is already placed in the building, loaded off the crane. Who's, you know, whose responsibility is that? The contractors, I guess, and then he's gotta go back to Evoqua.
I, I think we need to talk to a lawyer about that, because there's a whole chain of liabilities. And, and, and expressed warranties and contract language, I think, you know, so we have to understand. Cause right now, quite, quite frankly, honestly, if they wanna put it in place, we probably have very little, like, little leverage. You know, we can sign off on it, or we cannot sign off on it, but if it's substantially completed and it's functional and it doesn't fall apart within the warranty phase. We probably have no leverage. Because the.
I'm not opposed, I think it's fine to talk to the attorney, I think we should, uh, just understand our options and, and we can get the contract to them. If you, if you've got somebody you wanna use, there's, there's, there's the other clause in the contract that we use often on this one, that's the defective work clause. And um, uh, you know, we, in our correspondence tomorrow, could say this is defective. And so there's conditions in the contract that they have to comply with to, to, to meet the defective work. I also liked your other idea, if we can do a third party, uh, independent review of this, even if it is at, at, at your cost, first can ask them to do it. Uh, at their cost, they get, we reimburse, um, I think those are a couple, couple, so all three of those things, I think are good things to, to, to start doing.
I think it should be somebody that we order to do and maybe if anything get reimbursed, because we don't want that person to be paid and hired directly by the, by the supplier.
No, I think that has to be us, even not, not the contractor either.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's right, and uh, you know, it'll be interesting, cause you know, they, they, they may have jack look, deal with that if they do. Uh, but I think to, to Dawn's point, this, you know, we're gonna have to be prepared that this will and could delay things quite a bit. I, and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, the truck that drops off this tank number two Thursday's turning around to go get tank number one.
Yeah, because they had, they had to specially modify the trailer, so there's only. You know, they said there's only one trailer that can do it, so yes.
So another, another way to play this out is, you know, um, is, is we can do some of those investigations when it gets here. Of course, maybe, you know, then, then we even have less leverage too. So it's really a debate as to whether or not we wanted to hold it up there and say, until we get us the investigations we wanna get done, or. Or we take their word with the rights that we're gonna look at this thing closely when it gets here on our own with our guys locally.
Do we wanna do the inspection before they make the repairs, so that everything's visible, so like, you know?
For sure, yeah.
Absolutely. I, I think though, it's better for us if we go have somebody go there and look at it there.
Yeah.
Cause they could come here and drop it off and take off, and then we're stuck with it.
No, yeah, exactly. Cause we want them to fix it over there.
Yeah.
Cause they might not be able to fix it here, they did not set up with all of the tools or whatever they need to do over here, right?
But that person to go out and inspect it isn't, you know, it's really not Underwood, right?
I know, I was gonna say, there's two, there's two questions here, is who is that person to do the inspection? And who, who's, you asked about legal too, Wolf, who, who is that? I don't think that's Carrie.
And, and, and like Pete was saying, we have to make sure it's labeled properly too, as, that it's been repaired. Uh, cause they, you know, so we know it's always, there's something in the future, this one's repaired.
And, yeah, so it's documented exactly what was repaired, where.
Yeah.
So if those locations become compromised in the future. They're documented exactly, like you were saying, what angle of the tank, what elevation? So we know if there's something that develops in that spot. What are they gonna do? We should be warranted, you know, that they, they're gonna address that issue, whatever it is. Yeah, yeah, maybe.
I would start there.
What would you want us to, as we do that, and let's say we have to get somebody out there, we wanna get somebody out there, um, it's, we're gonna. How do you want us to handle the time, the time issue? Cause it will, you know, okay, let's say we can get, say we can get somebody out there in two weeks, and to me, that sounds pretty quick.
It does.
That's already gonna cause a, a, that's always gonna, already gonna create a delay situation.
Did they give a timeframe, how long it'll take to repairs? I mean, are they expecting when the truck drops off the vessel that's almost here? And then it goes back? Are they expecting when it goes, that truck gets back to Iowa, that it's gonna be ready?
They have not given us any indication on that. They just asked us to review the repair plan as soon as possible. So they can get going on the repairs to get it back as soon as possible. So I told them, I said, yeah, we'll look at it as soon as we can, you know, so we're not just sitting on it. But, you know, if we decide that we need to do things that are gonna take time, like an inspection, then obviously that's gonna, that's gonna have to wait.
I think we need to have a phone call with them and the contractor, the G C. Because, so, I mean, we can make this possibly go away if they, for example, agree to sign a five-year warranty, right? If, if they're, if they're putting their, 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 themselves out there and saying, okay, we stand for this quality and this repair. And we have no concern about standing for this for, for a number of years beyond the original warranty, that would give. Uh, us some, some, some level of confidence that we can say, okay, we're gonna take the risk, fix it, ship it, put it in place, so we can all move on here. So we're not jumping in shadows. If they're not willing to do that, we should be all the more cautious about the situation. Because the problem then is, if it's installed and we find an issue, can it even be repaired on site? And if not, does that mean we have to take the roof back off the building?
Yep.
I mean, this is an endless disaster. Potentially, so, so basically, I mean, they have to stick their neck out really far out of the window and say, okay. We're confident we can get this made right, we can, we can make this whole, and we're standing for this by extending the warranty for a number of years, like series number of years, years.
So what's the existing warranty? Is it only one year right now?
Yeah, one year from substantial completion.
Yep.
So that thing could fall apart in three hundred and sixty-six days from rust and.
Maybe be screwed.
I like that. Five year.
Yeah, we would, obviously, you know, if it was rust, we would see it before, you know, right, yeah, but, yeah, so technically, yeah, that, that is. You know, how it works is, yeah, three sixty-six all of a sudden.
Wouldn't see if it was on the inside.
Yeah, then, then you won't get anything, right?
Well, and again, I mean, if they were willing to pay for a roof to be removed and put back on twice. First when it's being removed and then when it's being brought back, that's fine, right, then I'll, then I'll sign off on it.
What do you see that, if, I don't know, if you guys think maybe we can see if um, if they're willing to do something like that? And that way, we're not gonna impede the timeline and. Cause this is a whole domino effect that none of us wanna have happen.
And, 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 and that five-year.
Begin with, what the hell?
And that five-year request you're, we're talking about would be in lieu of. Maybe a third-party inspection or, cause you're, what you're, what I think I hear you saying is that if they're willing to do that, then there. We have some confidence that they've made some repairs that are, they're willing to stand behind.
Right.
Okay.
And, and really we have to talk about, so if some additional defects were to be found, they need to talk to us if they can correct those in the field. Or if that means decommissioning the vessel and sending it back to Iowa, Iowa. We need to have information on that as well. Cause again, I mean, we're talking about.
We're only relying on what they've showed us so far.
Yeah, that too, but I mean, we're talking about a quarter million dollars for taking that roof off and putting it back on, right there.
Do we still wanna have somebody go out, look at it, though, on our own?
Well, if, you know, if they stick their neck out, I'd be okay with it, but they have to put some skin in the game, some serious, serious skin in the game. Otherwise, we probably have to reject it and do something about it.
So, but if they're good for the war, five-year warranty, then.
If they say, I, my, if they're saying that we guarantee for five years.
And, and if they confirm they can fix it in the field.
Okay.
If they cannot fix it in the field and we have to pay for getting it back out of the building and ship to Iowa.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
So at this point, if they don't agree in the five years, do you want Pete to tell them not, don't touch it until we get out there?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I guess on the first brush through, yeah, let's. Let's do that. Maybe we should try to line someone up anyway, just to see if they're available, but we should get an answer on this quick and then. So any ideas who that person would be if we did wanna ask somebody what their availability is? I don't even know who. About your field, is there anybody that you deal with like that?
I don't do pressure vessels, um, so, I would honestly, I would start with a propane tank supplier. Call, call, call any random propane tank supplier and ask them.
It's a good point.
Yeah, and we also deal with um, other tank guys, so if uh, you know, Peter, we may be able to talk to some of our welded steel tank guys. And some of the Highland type tanks who install buried steel tanks. So
Well, you would you would think that what is it's not N C, it's A S and I, right? What's the standard the standardizing agency for from? It's not N C, A S and me, that's what it is. Um, you would think that they have a pool of specialists that you can hire for stuff like that.
What about sorry, it's like Tonka?
They might know they might know somebody that do it. Yeah, any of the other vessel manufacturers.
Maybe they could do the inspection themselves.
Yeah.
They might have somebody in house that we could hire to or hire Tonka to do the inspection.
Is that a competitor to?
Well, they may they that's our iron manganese filters.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, but they won't want a competitor coming in and telling them. The competitor giving them an opinion. We call it a competitor, call it a peer review instead.
Yeah. Yeah, they don't even know where they came from, but.
You know, because it's in their interest to have this tank come out back because they can see what they did.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm not sure if Tonka would have their own employee as a as somebody, but they would be. Working with some firm that would have those capabilities. So if we hired them, it might be A B C Consulting that works for Tonka. So we're hiring an A B C consultant.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I would look into it, A S and me too. I'm sure they have a pool of 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 specialists you can hire. I mean, accidents happen all the time and there's got to be industry. You know, subject matter experts that you can hire, like courts hire them all the time, right? So.
So again, this is only if they refuse the five year repair warranty.
Yeah, and then the repair warranty is going to note that if you can't do it. On site, then you have to pay to remove the roof. You gotta pay to ship the vessel out for repair or furnish a new one.
Yeah.
And then and then bring back another, whatever, bring that back in and we put the roof together in the whole building. Yeah.
Yeah.
How much was the tank itself?
I was just gonna ask how much was the tank itself?
You're putting it on, you're at half a million right there.
Right.
Might be going a little bit too far over.
Well, it's not gonna be what we have for me. It's gonna be it's gonna be less than that. To remove the building. I said for both, I said, but I was ballparking.
So in the bid, did they have a line item for the cost of the tank itself?
Yeah, I just gonna look. I was gonna look at a total cost. I just I was just looking that up. So hold on one second.
But I know we've been throwing numbers. It's a million dollar for an extra tank. Because we had to do three lag tanks and that's three million dollars. But that includes like all soft costs and everything, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, media and the whole nine yards.
Yeah, hold on one second.
Yeah. Isn't it nice to have your computer at your fingertips instead?
I was just I was just thinking that and some something to be good. It's nice that I could just go, hey, I could get you that number. Just wait a second. Same thing with the. That ground, the floor drain permit.
Yeah.
So they have a line item on the, you know, if, you know, the G A C equipment of one million eighty thousand.
Wow. That's that's media, the whole nine yards, right?
Yeah, that is exactly. Yeah, you know, you know, the the whole, you know, so and I'm not sure how much, you know, so you'd never know on that one, you know. Does the G C have his markup in there? You know, it has all the carbon, you know, that's in there. It has startup, but has the shop drawings, it has. That's the pipe rack that, you know, everything that goes along with that. So, you know, so if you get if you had to get a vessel itself, you know. You know, and you had to re, you know, reconstruct a new vessel, you know, I don't know what was that maybe. If I just had to do a wild ass guess, I might say, you know, maybe three hundred or something.
Yeah.
While we we have another thing, so we want to know why they don't do an internal. Interior penetration test on the exterior one, right? We have questions about strain hardening. In the various locations where there's deformation.
Yeah, and bring these up to them because that that's going to definitely make them know that we're doing our homework on this thing.
And again, if, you know, if at least they're willing to extend the warranty. And and if they could confirm if they can fix those issues in the field or not, and and we can watch, we can. We can start thinking about being becoming lenient.
Yeah, I could almost guarantee that the the G C is going to listen to this meeting on that you have taped and and understand where you come from. So.
Yeah, that's good. Wes has been a good contractor and
Yeah.
He's up on that stuff.
But he will. He will listen in on this. So he'll know exactly your 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 feelings and stuff, so.
And if it helps, you know, we can jump on the call. But I mean, we can't just knock this off. This is too much of a risk.
Yeah.
We cannot.
Especially after, you know, it was just a scuff and a strap and all of a sudden they're showing us like five pages of.
Well, that's yeah, so three of the pages were the the damage report and two of the pages. I think with I think with was it all for the first four pages was the damage report. And then then there was two pages of the repair report. Some of the pictures are the same.
Yeah, I noticed it too.
Yeah, yeah.
In terms of the schedule and just making sure we're trying to be sensitive to not delaying things and still accommodating what we need to do. This board meets once a month. How do you want to communicate any quick decisions that may need to be made? Or how do we need to deal with any quick decisions that need to be made if we can't get a warranty or if we have to go some other route?
Because Ron could call. Or the board or we just we just we just do a quick meeting?
Yeah, I like send an email.
Yeah, once you But we can't like debate on it.
No, at least send an email.
Just to so you can provide information out. But we can't. We'd have to do a meeting or just one on one conversation to avoid an unpublished meeting. Because we're handcuffed by regulations that deal with that. So um. So why don't you send, I want to send information to you and then you forward it over to us?
And frankly, Ron, you can make those decisions. These are not decisions the board has to make because these are not monetary decisions as far as. Right? I mean.
Oh, yeah, no, no, absolutely.
So I mean, you're more than welcome to ping your ideas off of us, right? But in the end, we don't need a board decision to move on with any of this.
No, I guess it's true.
So.
I can now.
I don't want to.
Be discussed.
I don't want to.
And then I can talk with the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
And you you're welcome to get our support, right? But but I don't think you need. Any of from us to move on. So.
Absolutely, I can.
All right, here's your man.
Okay. I just I know I think it's important, though, just so we we all do what we can as quick as we can and and everybody's making the decisions they need to make. So that works. That works.
All right, do we close this out then? Any other final questions or are we beat this horse to the?
We beat.
Okay.
Yeah, the the so Wes is really in a total holding pattern until these vessels get here. So. He has been pulling his hair out, you know, for the last month trying to get these here because he did all that work to get ready to prepare for him. And he's been expecting things and and he's been lined up totally to have both of those vessels here. On June seventh, you know, putting the roof on and all that kind of stuff. And he is not. So, you know.
It's very disappointing.
Second vessel, if they could go back and just grab the second vessel, turn around and come back. Then it would, you know, probably be on site the week, you know, like the week of the, what is it, the eleventh, what, because the fourth is on a Monday, right? So like week of July eleventh, it would probably be coming in. So that puts them at least, you know, a month, you know, behind, you know, so. And if any kind of repairs on this is is going to push it out. So he is definitely pulling his hair out with it.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that's that's where we're at.
Yeah, no, it's it's nobody's fault, but. Whatever, bulkware and the trucking company, whatever, you know, so.
Okay.
Right, so so that's that's that one. And then and then just a real quick one on. On well two. So we're we sent the documents over to. Kinsman to sign and then so that he's looking to. Start sometime in July, start the work. So.
So is that I know we were talking about well nine going online and the hearts, the hard date on that is. Or being ready to be connected is December thirty first, the end of the year.
Yeah.
The fact that. Well, two hasn't actually been signed and started construction yet. It's not relative like that doesn't push out as well.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we asked him if he was willing to, because we're changing the bed life warranty, you know, on that, just do the same thing that, you know, or similar thing that we did to well seven and eight. And we asked him if he would extend. You know, that deadline from December thirty first to February twenty eighth, I asked him for two months.
Yeah.
And he says, no, those things aren't related.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then he he said, I'll talk to my subs and see if, you know, you know, see if they'll, you know. Do that, but he goes that then he he didn't feel that they were related. So.
Okay. All right. So anything else on well two?
No, that was it. Yeah.
Okay. So I guess that's it then. There's nothing else that you guys had on your list to talk to us. Uh, there's nothing on the action item list. We already looked at that. So. Unless anybody else has any other parting questions. I think we're okay with Underwood at this point. Anything else, guys? Anybody? No?
Okay.
Yeah, so get back to Ron on that, the Evoqua question. Hopefully, it'll just say, we'll give you the five year warranty and. That'll be a done issue and then get the repairs made and be done with it, but.
Yeah, we'll get something out tomorrow on that.
In a perfect world. All right. Thanks a lot, guys.
Good night.
All right. So that's. Moving on now, so we're at the. I get through the rest of these. Quickly. All right. So the next thing is the thank you letter that I drafted to the town council. And I believe that is in your packet as well. Here.
There's two versions.
There's two versions of it. Basically, I just wanted to know, does the commissioners want to have their signatures on this thing as well or? If not, this one version would just run in my signature and then there's another version with. Everyone else's signature. And. Then we would just have to have a way of having whoever's not here sign it. At a later date if everybody wanted to sign it. So. I guess it's really, I'd like to get, Paul's not here. I think John's still here. So if John's still in the audience, if you have a burning desire to have your signature on this, if you want, you can come down and sign it. Or
Yeah, you know, I've been feeling that way for a couple of days now.
So.
Sign the letter and get it off. It'll be fine.
Okay. So without you on it then?
Yeah, that's fine.
So what about you guys? Do you want to? Do you want to sign it?
I'll sign it. I'll sign it.
All right.
I think it has a little bit more weight if we sign.
That's what I was thinking. So we'll we'll keep all the signature lines on there and we'll just we'll just not have the signatures from from John and Paul. That's fine. It's not like it's a major important thing.
You just forge my signature on it if you want.
Okay. All right. So the next thing were the minutes on May seventeenth. I think. I reviewed these. I'm fine with everything. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. It's just a meeting from the last, the minutes from the last meeting. What are these in red? Is that something? There's some, is this showing the the edits or something? Looks like some of the that what came in our packet. Is that you guys seeing the same thing too?
I was.
There's some red line in there, so I'm not sure. It looks like it reads well. I just don't know if you. If there's red text in there because you're asking questions that need to be confirmed or.
There is some, yeah, there is.
Page, where is it? Right, paging.
Yeah.
All right. So you don't have any questions for us to address. I think it all reads okay. It just it just looks like it hasn't been printed like with accepting.
Yeah, except all changes.
And the. What do we have here? Is it public and non-public? Minutes from May seventeen, regular board of board of commissioner meeting in the May tw- seventeen public hearing. Let's do them separate because maybe some people weren't present at some for something.
I wasn't.
All right. Do we hear a motion to accept the minutes for May seventeenth, regular board commissioners meeting?
So moved. Was I there? I was, sorry.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, minutes. The May seventeen minutes. Motion made by Wolf, second by John to accept those May seventeen, regular board of commissioner meeting minutes as printed. Any other questions, comments? No, then we'll take a vote roll call. Wolf?
So moved. Oh, my God.
See, getting late.
You know, right? In favor.
All right, John?
Hi.
Ken abstain, Ken's abstaining. I am in favor as well. So that's three zero one with Ken abstaining. Fine, that's good. Now we're going to the May seventeen public hearing minutes. And I think you are not present here, Ken, as well. All right. Is there a motion to approve those?
I will move that one.
Where they're
Second.
Right, so let's do a roll call.
These are, these are the non-public meeting minutes, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, no.
No, 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 it's a public hearing.
Okay.
Public here.
Yeah. Wolf, roll call.
John moved, but
John move, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Hi.
And Wolf?
In favor?
Abstain.
And I'm in favor. So that's three zero one as well. Ken abstaining. All right, great. Get next here. Action items. Let's just go through these real quick, we can. Item number one, those are kind of an ongoing thing, I believe. Let's see here. This was table from February twenty four. Yeah, this is just an ongoing thing. Number two. That's something you've done, you've done quarterly, I believe, and you did it last quarter. Or I think we're, it's not to be done again, I don't think right now.
I don't believe so either.
I don't know if it was maybe April or May, but I know it wasn't. Anyways, I think it's not due right now.
Right.
Uh, number twelve. Did we get an answer on this thing? Capital reserve funds for well development can be used for engineering orders. Who do we need to ask on that?
Michelle.
Been going for a year, so. All right, we don't have any answer, so we don't get an answer tonight. But this has been over a year. So if it's just Michelle that we have to ask. Maybe see if we can get that.
It's actually illegal and I think we had, like I said, I believe we had the what. I have the answer. I just got
I have the answer, I just gotta find it.
You think you have that now, or do you wanna come back?
I don't think we can, because it's. If it was a STC, we could, we can use it because it was for the.
It's not because that's, this was five eight and twenty was added. But I believe. We can't.
So we'll look into it.
Let's, let's look into it. It di- didn't sound.
Like you're too convinced.
It's gave me again of what change order two was for, and I wanna say it was um.
I don't remember anything on this, to be honest with you, that. Alright, um, let's go on, number thirteen, um. Investigate templates for disaster recovery policy, data retention, security policy. Is that anything to do with the IT? Thing that we tabled next week for next month or not?
It is related to it, but I don't think it's the same thing, right?
Alright, so we'll.
And and it would be good to have an update on that. We've been kicking that one down the road quite a bit.
Yeah, it's been kicked down the road, they've been working hard on it.
Well, but for us, we have no visibility to it for quite some time.
Yeah, well, no, we do actually have, we started working on the policy as well, so. It ju- it just didn't make it to the.
Well, and and i- i- if it's being worked on, you know, that, okay.
Then that's the update, we didn't know that, so yeah, that's.
It's a, it's recovery plan, so which was part of the um emergency plan as well, along with the IT policy.
So all those we can update, the emergency plan, the IT cybersecurity plan. Then she did a credit card policy one, so a lot of wasted paper.
Alright, well, it's, then it's, that's, it's ongoing, that's good to know. Um, I think number nineteen, I think um Keith's gonna look into that with um, with Jamie anyways, right? Is this um? All available PFAS compounds. And then also the Pennachuck in Manchester. Number twenty-three. Uh, distribution system, maybe we can talk about, I had a request, somebody emailed um. Brandon Kernan, asking him if, and he's from DES, DE, uh, DES. One of our customers emailed him asking what the PFAS distribution is in the distribution system. He responded with an email, just kinda saying it's kinda hard to tell, depends on how much, which wells it'd be used and all that stuff. He asked if I had anything to add to that, and I said that we had collected PFAS samples in the distribution system. And in the northeast part of the distribution system that served primarily through wells four and five, that it's been. Non-detect in certain locations. And she had replied that she wanted to know if we have those results available for her to look at. And there was some question about should we make those available or not?
Are they included in the, in the report, those uh, distribution?
I don't think they're on the website, right?
I talked to Barbara Keely a while ago. Ron and I went out and did the samples, it was like kind of out of curiosity. And when they came back, we, was what we expected. But the issue I was telling Don that I have about posting those is because if you've got somebody over at four or five and you're consistently getting, you know, non-detects or whatever. That well goes down for repairs. Seven and eight are pumping out to the system, these people think they're getting PFAS rewater, they're gonna, I I think they'll be irate. So the whole point of giving them the raw water samples, what numbers, is so that they can see, this is the highest amount that you're gonna. Have in your water and you make it.
Well, not raw, not, not raw water, we don't pump raw water. Except for wells two, three right now, okay?
Two, three, seven and eight.
That's how it gets out of the ground.
Not, not for PFAS on seven and eight, but seven eight goes at least through the iron manganese, but anyway, okay.
It was trying to mag- and there was a blank, so it's not.
Water samples at seven and eight and treated water samples, same thing at four and five.
I mean, in my, in my email to her, this was a customer that asked this, I said. If wells four and five go offline for maintenance, you will be drinking PFAS water like the rest of the town is. So she just probably want confirmation that what I'm telling her actually has backup information. With ta- li- lab results. So I'm not sure that.
That just makes me nervous giving out those.
Well, we, we could, we could post them with a footnote that is pretty big. That says, you know, this is at the time of sampling, given the current, you know, combination of production volumes of the different wells. And this, you know, can fluctuate from anywhere to the worst PFAS Latin well in town. To non-detect, right? So the, the range is basically anywhere in between, right? If we have that footnote on the pub- published data, I'd be comfortable with it.
Cause it'd make me more nervous not giving out something that someone's asked for. After I've already explained what the truth is.
Well, and frankly, it's public data, we have no right to reserve it.
Get us to do it, you know, and that, it just makes MBD look like we're hiding something, in my opinion.
Again, I'm not sure if we can hold it back if somebody specifically.
This is a snapshot on time, this is in, like you said, you know.
Well, it has to be clear that it could be as bad as the worst well that we have in operation, right? But it, it, we don't expect that to be the case, usually when the board wells are operating balanced within the system. But I think that's a fair way to put it out there, and we can run it past legal and see what they have to say, but I mean, again, it's.
We can put it out there and just put a disclaimer on it.
Sorry, but I, I see, I see your point though. I think you have a good point.
So we put that on there and then, you know, people over at Parker Village goes down over there and they're saying that we're getting, finding out they're getting one, seven and eight PFAS water. And I could just see the backlash.
It's not even being off, it's just that it's your change of flow. A little bit different and so it doesn't stretch out as far, it's just, there's a lot of variables, so.
Let's make sure we cover that.
Yeah, maybe say it's a, it's a snapshot in time, this test, that, that on the date that these samples were collected. You know, and on that date, wells four and five, we're running into the system with treated water. And if for some reason the flow changes, wells four and five need to be taken down for maintenance. You could have as much PFAS in the water as the rest of the town currently has. You know, whichever highest well is, and they, they can find that data online. So, you know. So I think that would be easy enough. If you want any help on that language or anything, just let me know, or run it by me, or run it by Carrie, maybe, maybe that's what you wanna run by Carrie, that ma- that might make better. You know, just to make sure we're not saying something.
It will make her happy.
Where was I on? Okay, I think number twenty-four, cost of service study, Underwood's already on that one. Um, number twenty-nine, salt mitigation webinar. Are we uh? I don't know if it's a separate, oh yeah, there's a separate line item for thirty-six, I was gonna say about setting up a meeting for August. But I mean, that kinda jives together. This number twenty-nine. Contact attendees of the salt mitigation webinar to be sure they would be comfortable with MBD promoting the webinar. I think it's already on the website.
I think that's taken care of, that's complete.
Yeah, that one's already marked to complete.
Oh, okay.
Oh, because of the date, yeah, okay.
Yes, we could take those off, Amanda.
Yeah, so twenty-nine, Amanda, you can.
And thirty-four, right.
And thirty-four?
Number one.
Number one.
Number one?
Yeah, the date completed, six, nine.
I thought, yeah. Oh, so in the past, I think you've hidden those lines, haven't you?
They're all hidden on my end, so I think they must have just in translation gotten unhidden.
Oh, alright, that's why I was, I wasn't seeing that last column there, sorry. Okay, uh, number thirty-five. What is this, a flyer for bulk mailer rate increase to include reference to warrant articles?
That's in the process.
Yeah, yeah. So the salt meeting for August, you wanna move on yet or?
Well, thirty-five, do, can we put a due date behind that? Because July is coming really, really quick.
It's probably just gonna end up going out and. Oh, you said you were gonna do a notice before, right? Okay.
And again, that's gonna include the statement that. These increases are less than what the voters saw as part of the.
You wanna run it by you? You wanna look at it?
We can, but you know, I mean, the message is, again, this is lower than we feared it's gonna be at this time, right? So we're trailing in the increases that voters had bought into, basically, non-Biden-y, but right, but, but still bought into. By voting those warrant articles in place, petition warrant articles in place, that it's still less, you know, than, than the national, I'm sorry, the Hampshire. Rate? Thought there was a third point that I made, but those two are key points that we need to make, for sure. Oh, well, yeah, and, and, and then the, the tiered rate, right? That we're doing this to basically, you know, avoid that. Household users of water are getting unfairly burdened with the cost explosion, if you wanna call it. For PFAS filtration due to um irrigation. So those were the three, all of the items I think we need to bring across.
Get it on there and send here a copy of the, the card.
If you want to. You, you know, I mean, my point, I think, you know, if you guys think you have it covered, I don't wanna micromanage more than, so.
Alright, so you're just gonna, you're okay with?
As long as those points are somewhat covered, I'm okay with it, but you're welcome to send it anyway, it's your, it's your, I don't wanna, I think it's more difficult than it has to be.
Um, salt committee who, meeting in August, is you need anything? Assist on any of that for anything? I don't know what I can.
No, I just, I really need to actually get in touch with Jamie and get an agenda together. Before I do anything, so I think.
Okay. Cause I think that's gonna go out. Fairly soon and beginning of July to get it, you know. Buddy, are we trying to figure out what date works for everybody in this, like a three poll and all the attendees or what? I'm not sure exactly.
I've got the committee together, so I have the, the ones that said it'd be on it.
And what's the vehicle of communication to those committees?
It's been email.
Okay.
So it, everybody uh. The ones that said they were joining was, it was, I contacted to email. So I really wanted to get an agenda together first and then. Get it out to them and then figure out when our meeting would be. Probably through a doodle poll or.
So I would advise, probably more important to get a date pinned out before an agenda. I think we can always follow up on an agenda before the meeting. Maybe get on, I don't know if you can even get ahold of, of uh, Jamie right now. Right, he's critical to be there. You are, may, you know, at least to get, make sure that some dates are not, totally not acceptable to Jamie primarily. Probably yourself or something, and then. If you could pin down what works in August uh with Jamie. Then send the doodle poll out to all of the committee members, is that what your intent was? Alright, and hopefully we'll get more than like two or three responses.
I think, I mean, they've already said they have. So, you know, barring any big, you know, vacation or anything like that, so I don't see why they wouldn't.
Right. It's just, it's tricky in the summer, you know, with this, a lot of people taking vacation time. Alright, um. The decision matrix here, criteria for moving forward, alternative water sources. I mean, I think that, that's gonna come, that's number thirty-seven, that's gonna come after um, probably after we have this um. Did we talk about sending a doodle poll out for a work session in the middle of July too? You got that? Okay. Alright, you don't need to bother putting that as an action item, cause it's gonna be. Done by the time the next meeting. And the thank you letter is done, so thirty, thirty-eight can go. Leave thirty-seven on, and I think that's it. Alright, okay. Old business. Where we at here, nine o'clock? Still have a non-beating after this, right?
I thought I was supposed to be at seven thirty. Do go to work tomorrow morning.
I don't have any old business for tonight. Anybody got old business? Anybody got new business?
Let's talk about the uh, Turkey Hill Booster.
I'm out, guys. Uh, thanks for the meeting, I will see you next time.
Okay.
Good night.
So I guess we'll have, the next, we'll still have a quorum with three of us.
Yeah, yeah, we have some. To discuss.
So, real quick, you wanna just mention about the Turkey Hill Booster, there was a complaint about noise and light and.
So where that?
There is a neighbor. And I, I actually had met with her, them, I should say, the couple, and uh. One of the things we talked about, well, we talked about uh, noise from the booster making, making too much noise, making a vibrating. Lights shining in bedroom windows, kind of a lack of privacy with the. Where the boosters now up more towards their backyard. And they've actually been getting people driving in there now because the gate's not there anymore. Something that we, that we have done. We did add some uh. Arbribites. On the, up on the end, this is a barrier, I was offered to put in a fence. And uh, they, they liked the uh. More of a, a bush type thing, so I. Put about ten out, ten of those and planted those. I did talk to Tim Poles today and. There is, we can change the lighting, that's not gonna avoid any warranties, so I'm gonna.
And, and just to clarify for the public, that's the project manager on Underwood, sound right?
Correct, yes.
For the project.
And he is actually looking in, so one of the things we're gonna do this weekend, I'll, I will actually get some lights changed out over there. That was one of the things we were waiting on. And the noise, and if, I don't think there's anything we can do about the, the noise, um, but Tim is looking at that.
Question for you, that's what they, when it comes to the note, uh, when was her initial complaint, I mean. I guess I had, I'm asking, oh, what, I mean, obviously, the, the booth has been running since November, right? Or is it December? Well, it starts with the difference.
It's when the windows go open, though.
Well, and, and the old station was underground, the new station.
The main thing, it's, they never heard. They didn't, yeah, it's like a humming noise.
The first, the first uh, concern was April, there was an email of um, April nineteenth.
Okay, it said something like, can you do like soundproofing or something?
And, and we are looking into that, I, I don't know if we can. The station, so it'd be, the station was built similar to like a general, it does have soundproofing in it. But it's, it's a. So hopefully, I don't know what can be done, like I said, I talked to Tim, he's been looking at that as well. But I think we definitely can change the lighting, I've addressed the, the uh. The alarm that kept going off was when um. If you get like a low tank level, it was a, the booster would shut down. So you could re- you could get the tank level back up to a certain level. Or a preset level, then you could reset the, the booster and that would run again.
So that's gone now, right?
That was disarmed, cause it didn't make it, I, I went over twice and to reset the alarm, I'm like, nobody's even here for an audible alarm.
That's right.
We need an audible alarm. We need an audible alarm.
Yeah, you guys get the notification.
Right, we get notifications.
So really, the only two remaining things are a couple of lights that shine directly in that direction, so.
That'll be changed, I'm gonna have those changed out this week.
And what are you changing? Are you making them?
I will change them to motion, so that it'll only be on, we can shut them off in the meantime until we get them changed, but my, my goal is to get them changed out this week.
Okay. Cause we still want them in case we have to do nighttime repairs, you want that lit up.
Right, and I think it'd be a security, a, a security thing, if, at least even for them, if somebody who's drive up there, the lights are gonna come on, they'll know somebody, something's going on over there as well.
Is there something where we, where they're saying people are driving up?
She'd asked to move the gate, I was kinda hoping to hold off on that, I'm gonna add some more signage.
So the gate was moved up the hill further as a matter of convenience, so the staff doesn't have to, you know, open and close the gates in the winter all the time. Cause you wanna go to the pump station.
And now, yeah, so it's more of a safety issue for.
So if we have to, I wasn't planning moving it all the way down back to where it was, I would probably put a gate up near toward the building, so you're not pulling up as far, but.
Put it to an area where our staff can drive to and park without having.
Walk around. And that's what I was thinking, that's what I was thinking, just a little bit further.
Right, I mean, I, I, I don't know.
Well, I, I think, you know, would it make sense maybe to, to schedule a meeting again, and you probably have already done that, but maybe a walkthrough, you know, of, 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 of the location together with the neighbor? And just, you know, maybe after these modifications have done, have been done these recent ones, right? And then we just meet again and we, we just, I mean, we're not trying to be difficult, right? We're trying to do what we can to, to. And I hear that, so, but sometime, you know how it is, I think the problem is sometimes you can do, you know, one can think that one does anything, you know, in their power, but it still looks different, differently from a different position, from a different view, point of view, right? So out of that person's eye, it may not look like it at all, and that person may perceive it as, you know, still not satisfactory or you know, difficult and resistant or whatnot, so I think just to continue to communication with that person and maybe meeting on site might be a good idea, and the person is invited, is, is more than welcome to, to, to join, in fact, that, that person approached me too, and, and, and I, I, I said, you know, best thing to do would be to reach out to, to the superintendent and to the board, but that we're more than happy to hear it here as well in person, right? And talk about it and see what we can do.
All right, so the, the thing that remains left to determine beside the gate is the, is the noise, and Tim from Underwood is looking into what we can do about that.
Yeah.
Is it just run one resident, or is there?
One, yes.
Okay.
Despite next door.
It's the right next door.
Well, yeah, I just, I just didn't know.
I think there is nobody else as close, right?
Not, no, I mean, there's a neighbor across the street and then across the bro, bro, but that's.
And, and sometimes those noise studies, you know, and they're not necessarily super expensive, but sometimes it's just one part of the building that translates that noise, right?
That's true too, what is the, what is the noise we're hearing, is it coming from a particular piece of equipment that can be modified?
Right.
Instead of having to put air, no, noise, soundproofing around the whole structure or something, I don't know.
It's, it's, the pump's running.
Yeah.
It's definitely that, but.
Right, but, I mean, we have a structure surrounding the pump, right? Oftentimes that noise has to be transmitted by, say, for example, a window that vibrates, or, you know, by, by, by a, by a wall that, you know, or some, some encasing in a wall that vibrates and actually transmits it past the building. It's usually not the whole building, right, like, like a rock wall doesn't, doesn't vibrate, for example, right? Like a brick and mortar wall doesn't vibrate, so we have to maybe look a little bit, is there a, a small change that we can do that has a big impact on it? It could be, for example, simple, as simple as, like a piece of conduit, right, that comes from inside of the building, that's actually feeding a line to the pump and it's going, for example, and protruding through the wall.
That is a good point.
Sometimes just walking around and putting your hands on different things, it makes you feel the vibration and you can.
Maybe that instead of just looking at the pump as a whole and seeing the pumps making noise, maybe wet on the pump if there's something.
That is, that's a good point, cause we, I did walk around in the station and there's actually a square cutout where the pipe comes up through the floor. It's open to the concrete, we may, yeah, maybe try plugging those up and seeing if it makes a difference. That could be, that could be, you know.
And it might be, it might not even be the motor, right? It might be actually the pump itself down in the ground, right, and then putting maybe some coupling in between or something, something that.
That's what I'm thinking, is the pump above or is it?
The pump is above, it comes up through the floor, so it's a steel building sitting on a concrete pad.
Right, right.
And there's a space, you know, six, six, eight inches in the floor of the, of the, so it's like, it sits on like a skid, it sits on the concrete, so it's probably like, oh, yeah, foot space, six, eight inches, or foot space between, but there's a square opening where the pipe comes through into the, in goes to the pump, then pushes down, goes, the same thing on the other side. And I did walk through thinking maybe that might be.
Believe it or not, one of the boldest tricks in the world is get a big screwdriver and just keep walking and touching different areas, and where it gets louder. I just did that the other day with a machine and.
Actually, you know, the old fashioned phone things with a, like a little nail poking out of it, I have that to listen for dead pipes and hydrants and.
Maybe, maybe insulating pieces of the equipment that are not heat sensitive, cause you wouldn't wanna block heat exhaust, but if there's other stuff that we can wrap, wrap pipe material or.
I might have, I could, a couple of things.
I, I think we should do what's reasonable, try to minimize the noise and, you know, and.
Can, can we add this as a to-do to, to the agenda, you know, to the? I ca, I kinda wanna follow up to this in a month and not forget.
We can make an agenda item next week, next week, next month, absolutely.
But you, but you have, but you have been at least talking to them, so they. Yeah, so, okay, that's good, so there's been interaction.
I always struggle a little bit with our process of adding something to the next meeting as an agenda item, because if you guys don't write it down and don't remember, remember it, we may forgot, forget about it. And if, you know, if we don't remember it either, and maybe remind each other, so is that something we wanna maybe create an action item?
I think so, yeah.
Just to make sure that we actually don't.
I thought you were saying you wanted an agenda item.
Well, I do, but, but how do we guarantee from this meeting forward, because, no offense, but it has been, there has been times when an agenda item has been discussed and it hasn't been found on the agenda.
Yeah, something else comes up and then again.
Like flag, you know, I, I wanna raise a flag and make sure it's gonna stay there.
Yep. Be an agenda. Action.
Yeah, and an agenda item kinda elevates it a little bit more important.
It does.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so that was new business, anything else?
Yes. So first, I wanted to really thank you guys for organizing, you know, and I don't wanna call it an open house, because it was an open house, it was a walkthrough for a few elected officials, and I was under the impression that all current state reps have been invited and the town council. If I'm not mistaken, well, I'm not sure if we invited the town council, but I know, not the town council, it was.
All current.
All current state reps and senator, right?
Yeah.
And it was really intended to.
Barbara Healy was there.
I apologize.
Whatever the list you gave, Ron is what we invited.
Well, well, but it wasn't a selective list, right, it was, it was the current elected officials, you know, across the board, right?
Eight reps and seven counselors?
Right.
There were seven at the time, I don't know.
But, uh, you know, we have obviously a lot more people to thank for Wells four and five, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So we have, we have, you know, the drinking and groundwater trust fund, we have former state reps that we have to thank, we have.
Local advocates that have brought everything to attention.
Correct.
At, at the beginning.
Right.
Yep.
So, so we have, we have really a number of people that we have to thank and, and, you know, that, that should enjoy the moment when that thing is being ribbon cutting is happening, right? So, and we know we haven't done this because we didn't know, you know, on a large scale, because we didn't know with COVID, how fast is it gonna resolve and everything, and we also had planned to do it together with Wells seven and eight, when they can, when that, that filtration plant comes online here and fall, now with the vessel issue, that might not happen as soon as we thought, right? So and we can postpone this a little bit more, but I just wanted to say that for me, there's still an activity that needs to happen that is really open to the public completely, right, you know, all, 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 you know, that's being announced a couple of weeks ahead of time, you know, for, for Merrick neighbors to, to go and see what, what they're paying for, what we put in place here and then and really to, to have, you know, an official little speech and, and a couple of thank you notes to a couple of people and, and an official invitation for those folks. So I just wanted to make sure that we all agree that that wasn't it, there's more to come. Right, but I also wanted to say that, that you guys really did an awesome job and I really wanted to thank you for that.
Yeah, it was, it was really well done and everybody, everybody was raving about it, so you know, definitely did something right there and it was a, it was a good time, it was well done and thanks for that, definitely.
Thank you. So I don't know, did we wanna maybe hold off and find out what's going on with seven and eight and maybe revisit that next week, next month, and maybe also put that as a to-do or agenda item, so we will stay on it, because if we don't start planning for this in August, it's not gonna be happening in September, October, right? We need like a two months, what's that?
It went pretty quick that time, didn't it?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, right, I mean, this is something we need to start planning three months ahead of time, right? So. You can, but the public can, right, we need to announce this like at least four weeks ahead of time, right, or three weeks ahead of time. And to be able to announce it three or four weeks before the actual date, that means we have to have it set up and, and thought out how we wanna organize it.
Yeah.
Eight weeks ahead of time, right, so this is really something we need to set in motion.
So do we wanna do something sooner than later for four, four and five, and then have something when we can, when seven and eight, when it comes on, when that comes on, we can just do two different.
So this would be general public invite?
I, I'm torn on that, to be honest, I would say yes in a heartbeat if it wouldn't be so much time and work and effort, right, but, but I mean, we're, this is a serious expense, right, I mean, there, there might well be two hundred people showing up to that thing, right?
In this case, where it's open house, open house, I don't think we should be doing a barbecue for.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we could have a food truck that might wanna, wanna, you know, come by and, and see if they can pick up some business, right?
Also, if you're doing four and five and seven and eight, they're still, they gotta travel back and forth too, so it's like an all-day affair.
And that's actually a good point, it might be easier to separate the two events, so we don't have the logistics, right, that's actually a good point, might be better off two.
I don't think you need two events, just have one event, I mean, per one open house.
You come out and see it, so you're not.
No.
Yeah, I mean, people would go to four and five and then a week later, have to take off work or whatever, just decided to do it for days.
That's the question, do we wanna wait until seven and eight is ready to go, or do we wanna do four and five now?
I think we can do something a little bit, a lot scaled back at each of them separately and just say, hey, we're offering an open house during the hours of year in here, anybody in the public wants to come and walk through and ask questions. Separately, at separate times, I think. I, you know, I don't know how much you're gonna get weekday in the middle of the day with everybody working.
I was thinking Saturday, I don't know, weekend has to be Saturday. Yes, it would be expensive over time, but.
Yeah.
You're a couple hours.
Yeah, what do you think, like a two-hour window or something?
Yeah, that's what I was, a couple hours and.
Dave's cooking rock though, so that was pretty good.
You're gonna make it sound swell.
It was really good.
Would it be something where you wouldn't pre-register for it, you would just come down, or what would you, would you need a, I mean, I try to keep it so simple, so we don't I like your idea about a food truck.
I think we should approach a food truck, maybe, you know, maybe barbecue, a barbecue truck or something like that, you know, hit them up and see if they wanna come over. Then people can basically, you know, pay for it. But it should have a little bit of ceremonial power too, right, something where we, like in ribbon cutting. Chairman holding a little speech and thanking them.
I gotta give them the big scissors.
That's right. I have some of those if needed.
Oh, you do?
Well, the shooting range does.
Give it to Ron, he was around listening longer than me. All right, um, so, why don't we make this an action, action item, I don't know that it needs to be on the agenda, really. You on that, Amanda, you wanna make that an action item, open house at Wells four and five for now? And then we'll just talk about setting one up for seven and eight. Once, once we know when, we might have an idea when that plan's coming online, we're far from that right now, so we'll deal with that, probably be out hopefully before winter. Hopefully, but who knows? All right. Um, any other new business? I got a few things here, but I can, I can put those off, nothing's pressing. It kinda stemmed from our conversation with Underwood, with, with my one-on-one with Underwood on the, the different alternatives that they evaluated. But we can, we can get into that at the the specific meeting we're gonna have, the work session, I should say. All right, superintendent report?
Just a couple of quick things, we did a first round of lead and copper samples. Picked the samples up, May twentieth. Received results, June ninth, June eleventh, we put the result letters out. We had no exceedance and we did sixty-one samples were taken. You see, our four samples have been done, April twenty-eighth, samples were taken, May twenty-eighth, we received results.
That was one of my questions about we have to do lead and copper every time we add a treatment plant, bring a treatment plant online.
It's not because of the treatment plant, it's because of the new well for our.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so we, they consider it a new well, new well source now.
Okay, that's not what, um, Keith was under the impression we're gonna have to do this every time we bring a new plant online, every time you change the treatment. So, I was gonna say, if we need to do that, maybe we can ask DES if we can forego having to do it for well seven and eight, we just do it after well two comes online, but.
We'll probably have to again with well nine.
Yeah, that's true.
Now, we were on triannual, but because of our water system size, now they, they said that we have to sample yearly. Then because new well for our it was thirty samples every three years, and then they said thirty samples every year, now we have to do sixty samples in the first half of twenty twenty-one, and sixty samples in the second half of twenty twenty-one.
Ting, ting.
Put E out there. I, all of us here are on the lists, are, that are living in Merrimack, I push those aside and then take the rest of them, so that, that way if we don't get enough samples turned in, we all run home and get it the next morning.
Oh, yeah.
Backup things, it's happened before.
Cause somebody, some of the people don't get the samples back to you. Yeah. Okay. All right, anything else? Superintendent report, that's done, questions from the press and public, do we see anybody in the queue?
Dave is hanging on for sheer life, oh, that's right, he was listening and I was praising his cooking skills. His head's wrong for sure.
So none there, just Dave? All right, and seeing that, I think we're actually gonna make motion go into non-public, it's gonna be very quick, but at this time, that's gonna end the the video session from Merrimack TV. Right, so.
We need, we need to quote the reason why.
A motion to go into non-public. Yeah, I don't have those actually in front of me. Is it an email?
Yeah, I have a topic right here.
Thanks. All right, so it's gonna make a motion to go into non-public session. This is related to RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two. And in parentheses separately, A, and then D, and then E. And that's dismissal, promotion, or compensation, acquisition, sale, or lease of property, and pending claims or litigation. So, do I hear a motion for that? To move, moved by Wolf. Second, second by Ken. All those in favor signify by saying aye, cause we don't have a call anymore, so that's three zero zero. With John and Paul have, are not present at the meeting, they have left the present, so that's three zero zero. All right, thanks, so that's the end of the public session, thanks MTV, Merrimack TV for recording.